Everyone to our February 24th work session and we'll get started right away. First, I want to introduce Josh Caffey. He is representative from our Student Board of Representatives and attends school at the Patriot Learning Center. So thanks, Josh, for being here tonight. Excuse me. And our first item on the agenda is the proposed student choir fees from Stetson Elementary.
I'm Jeff Maltin, the principal of Stetson Elementary School. Here. At the beginning of the school year, we started listing all the fees we were going to be collecting. We have a yearly choir that goes on in the springtime and we did not put that fee on there. So we're asking for approval to charge a $25 fee for our choir, this run by Ms. Becca Gardner. That money goes towards a T-shirt, it goes toward sheet music and other supplies that are needed for the choir.
Yes, my daughter enjoyed it both years she was in it, so thank you. Okay, so if everyone's fine, we'll move that forward for approval at the next meeting. And so our next agenda item is the Sand Creek High School Campus Teacher Leaders Update.
Mr. Matson, way to set the timing bar for an agenda item.
We will suck up all that time. Ron Hamilton is unable to be here with us tonight, so he asked me to come and introduce the teacher leaders. I'm Janet Giddings, I'm an associate principal at Sand Creek High School. And this is our first year with teacher leaders. We had a rather broad job description and each of these people have taken that job description and really honed it and made it their own and they all shine in their own individual way. Probably the first thing on the presentation is Freshman Academy and the teacher leader for Freshman Academy is Aria Bartlett. And she has a flat tire. So we're gonna skip that part and she's on her way here. And our other teacher leaders are Nicole Sides for the School of Business, Todd Matea for the School of Design and Andy Smith for the School of Advanced Academics.
Good evening. So I was gonna piggyback on Freshman Academy because we're gonna pilot this first. I know I have to be in front of the mic, don't I? It bothers me, I can't stay in one place. We are going to be piloting this in the freshman class next year and some in the sophomore class, but... So that's why I was gonna piggyback on that, but I'll just go ahead and start. So one size fits one, this is our personalized learning initiative. A lot of times you're gonna hear people talk about personalized learning and blended learning in the same breath. And it really isn't the same thing. What we're looking at is doing personalized learning with blended as one component. And blended means you're partially in the classroom, doing other things, and then partially online. So why are we looking at personalized? Because we believe at Sand Creek that the way we're currently doing education is not sufficient to meet the needs of all students. And we can't possibly, in this day and age, meet the needs for students that can go faster and farther and students that maybe need a year and a half to finish Algebra I. Our units are time-bound. We say we're gonna be four weeks on this unit and regardless of what you know or how you do or how you did on your semitive, we're moving on to the next unit. And if we have time, we'll go back and remediate. Well, that's not acceptable anymore. We have, what do I want to say? We have technology for blended that can help us really look at where a kid is, what we can do to help remediate, how we can go back and capture the knowledge that they don't have in a way where they don't miss out on an entire semester or quarter or what have you because we had to continue moving on while they didn't grasp a concept that they needed to grasp before they could move on. So some of the things that we're doing with personalized is we want a lot of agency for the student. We want voice choice, path and pace. One of the components of blended learning really is also place. But we have a constituency in the Sand Creek zone that really needs us for a custodial purpose. And so we plan to continue to fulfill that. So we will have kids come, just like they do in a regular schedule now, but we will eventually, now this is part of our long-term plan, but we will eventually give them some autonomy over pace. Can the farther and faster kids move farther and faster? Could they get through a year of English in a semester? You're darn right. Do we have kids that might need a little bit longer? Yeah, we do. So we are going to try to come up with a plan. We have come up with a plan and we're gonna try to execute to really give kids, each individual kid, what they need to be successful. So what you're gonna see here is we have a series of quad rooms at Sand Creek High School. So a quad room is basically four rooms that we have together that the walls can all collapse. So it can be one large room. So what we're gonna do, flex model is just one of the blended models, but this is the one that we're really looking at. So we are going to use a larger space, has a larger number of kids and then have different things going on as they're in the classroom. So the next one, just a little teaser for you, this is kind of a mock-up of our schedule. And what you're gonna see is what we're gonna pilot first is every classroom will have 90 kids per class. And I understand that sounds really scary, but what it is, is innovative. And what we are doing with these kids is we will have two disciplinary teachers. So the ELA, two ELA teachers teaching together with a SLD or Special Ed Assist and a Student Success Coach. So really, you're talking about less than 25 kids per student, which is better numbers than we have right now. That, and these teachers will work together, the kids will be on an LMS. We're looking at Gradpoint, Gradpoint's Pearson product. The wonderful thing about Gradpoint is that everything that's in Pearson's library, we have access to. And I don't have to tell educators how much Pearson has access to. Pearson's a large product. So you will see this coming year, this is our pilot for this year, and then the social studies. We're piloting an ELA in social studies. Social studies will also do the same thing, second period, same team. And then we have two brave, exceptional master teachers, I would say, piloting in the 10th grade with one group of 90. And the difference in the 10th grade is they are gonna pilot that interdisciplinary. So they are going to teach together world literature and world history. They're gonna create the class in Gradpoint and they're gonna teach it interdisciplinary together. And that's our hope for the following year after ELA teachers get it under their belt, social study gets it under the belt, that they also teach interdisciplinary. And Gradpoint or an LMS, Learning Management System, really gives us the capability that as the kids work through, we have immediate access to data. So that we can go back, we can see the 10 kids that aren't doing as well in this particular unit or on this particular standard. We're gonna pull them out, we're gonna assign them a playlist, they're gonna go through that and they come right back into the class. So it's not credit recovery anymore, it's unit recovery. And it's moving them as they need to move. So there's much more to this. So Board, here's your invitation, if you would like, or anybody else. If you would like to learn more about our one-size-fits-one initiative, we are having or hosting an open meeting on March 2nd from 8:30 to 10:30. We're gonna take them through a couple of classes that are piloting it right now so they can take a look at and really get some feedback on what we can do better to make personalized learning really, really an agent of change for student achievement. All right.
I'm Andy Smith and I'm the teacher leader for the School of Advanced Academics. At Sand Creek, we really want to prepare our students in the path toward college in the School of Advanced Academics. We have, besides and Mr. Matea are gonna talk about some more vocational and also college prep programs, but this is more the academic side. And we all know the advantages of going to college or for taking advanced academics courses in the, in respects to time savings and cost savings when we get to college. So we have the three programs at Sand Creek. We have the concurrent enrollment. It's a new program for us. We have an English class taught by Paul Finch, our PPCC professor. Right now, it's just, it's kids who've passed the AccuPlace exam and we need to work on building that so that we can also include some of the vocational programs from PPCC as well as just the college preparatory or the actual college courses. Sand Creek also has the IB Diploma Program. And that's unique to our campus. It's a continuum from the primary years program to the middle years program to the diploma program all the way through the college or all the way through Sand Creek. And that's gonna give our kids that opportunity to have higher rigor and earn that college credit and savings and time savings when they get to college. And then we focused our attention really this year on the IB and and we've offered a few AP courses where they don't duplicate content. So next year, we're allowing some AP courses to continue for seniors who have planned on that in their, in their course of study. But after next year, next year, it's gonna be scaled back a little bit and the year after that a little bit more, but still giving the kids plenty of options within those three programs.
It's me again. I knew I couldn't do two minutes each, so sorry, but I warned you. No. School of Business is something, this is, these are slides that I made for the kids when we did our presentation, so you can take a look at them. We used to have business in Sand Creek, business is coming back to Sand Creek. And we really have three distinct pathways that we're gonna concentrate on. That's business management, business communication and business enterprise. And with each, within each of those, we have different plans of study. Now, what makes this attempt at a School of Business a little bit different than the way we did in the past is we really have a plan of study targeted toward a student who does not plan to go to college or even community college. They are really looking to enter the workforce right out of high school. So in each of these, we have office management, sales and then Business Your Way, which Gradpoint has about 60 courses that are CTE courses. And because we are using it for a personalized initiative, we can also use that in business. And essentially, it's introduction to a lot of careers that we would never be able to offer as a class. Veterinary science, agriculture, a lot of different things. But in, through Gradpoint, we can offer about 60 classes that we couldn't before. So if a teacher or if a student comes to me and says, hey, I wanna know more about journalism or I wanna know more about this, I can say, hey, you know what? I got a class for you. So we're gonna go in the, they're gonna do it through the business lab and you can have 30 kids in there and they're each in a different class studying about their separate career. And we also have though, for the student, the executive management, finance, public relations, marketing, entrepreneurship and leadership for the student that does wanna go get a little bit more education, whether that be two years and they want a technical certification or whether that be four and then later on to their masters because they wanna be an MBA. So we're trying to hit, meet the needs of the students because, you know, really the days of telling ourselves that every kid is going to college and high school teachers like to tell themselves that. It really isn't true. There's a group of students that we are missing, but if we can prepare them, right? Oh, I'm so sorry, that was the beep. If we can prepare them to, you know, with the soft skills that they need to be upwardly mobile to move from just an employee to maybe a shift manager, then later a manager, you know, we wanna give them the tools that they need, no matter what they're doing, to be promotable. So that's what we're looking at in the School of Business.
Okay. Todd Matea, the teacher leader over AMP for the School of Design. And again, the reason why we call it AMP is because it stands for Visual Arts, Manufacturing, Performance Arts, Engineering and Computer Science and Design. And so these are our major programs within the school. And then what we're really trying to hit for our new programs is we're looking at our manufacturing pathway. So in this case, we're looking at really taking something from the idea of plans and making sure that the students can make it a reality. So some of the things that we've got going on are focused on welding, CNC machining, safety design and a lot of different tooling, but basically being able to allow students to get their hands on some things and actually create some stuff. And we have a lot of kids that are excited about that. The next piece is that we've got two separate pathways that are gonna be part of our computer science IT pathway or program, and that is going to be computer technician. And so what we're looking at for that is more like A+ certification, Network Plus, Security Plus. And we, we've just become a partner school with CompTIA. And so all of our certifications are actually like half price. So it's about $99 per certification for those kids. And there's a lot of free curriculum actually available out there. And so that could be something where we could see a lot of our students actually coming out industry-ready for a lot of jobs in that area. The other piece is software engineering. Right now, we're working with Diane Kingsland and STEMSCO to look at some things around the idea of cybersecurity and some partnerships that we have going on there. And so the hope is that we can, we can build some partnerships with that. But even if not, we've got a new PLTW software engineering program that's gonna be going in eventually for that. So the next piece is that we've, we still have our visual arts pathway. But one of the things we really wanna focus on are these ideas of like the ceramics piece, the photography pathway for digital photography and graphic design pathway and just being able to really look at those as pathways straight into career and possibly students going into college for a business degree to cover some of the different pieces, but then able to learn all the skillsets necessary for a career even in high school. And so then we have the performance arts pathways. And that includes our instrumental music, our vocal music and our theater. And one of the big pieces of this is just that it makes students very capable when they're presenting in front of people. It gives them the, the performance aspect of that. So we have our engineering pathways. Engineering pathways includes our engineering technology, which is a little less math-intensive and science-intensive, even though it still requires math and science. And then the engineering, but this one is more like a two-year degree program and this one is more of a four-year degree program. And just as a side note, back with the manufacturing, one of the things that's really neat going on in the area is that there's a lot of people paying or looking as manufacturers to hire students and then pay for their college. And so that's one of the things we're trying to tie into as well. And then we have the video production pathway, which are with our digital video and audio production classes, students can actually learn things related to video editing, video production, graphic development within that for like motion graphics and different things. And they can actually come out industry-ready as well. So, and we have some certifications that we're looking at for, for that. And then the last one is general design. And that is really the idea of just teaching students to create something with a purpose and with a design process. And so that is... Okay. Okay. All right, fantastic. So, oh, sorry. So real quick, we have our Freshman Academy. One of the things that we're doing with our Freshman Academy is we're really working hard to make sure that our freshmen feel included and that they feel prepared to kind of move on. And so we've got four main pieces of that. And that is the nurturing environment, belief system that all can learn and be successful. And I think that's important. You would think that was assumed, but it's not always assumed. And then the effective parent-teacher contact and targeted teacher development. But what we're really trying to do is create a collaborative community that's really going to bring those kids into a place where they feel like they can be successful and believe that about themselves. And so right now, we've got some Freshman Academy monthly events and things that are going on with the students. We've got quarterly staff instructional PLCs where the staff are getting together and collaborating on the students that they're dealing with. And then we have park incentives and test preparation to really help students be prepared for that and inter-school relationships that help also. So, and the last slide for our deal is whether or not you have questions on any of the things that we just talked about.
It's exciting and I, I wish my child wasn't gonna be a senior next year so she could take advantage of all these new things that you guys are gonna be doing. So I'm just really happy you're going down this pathway at Sand Creek. So thank you all for all your hard work.
For the one-size-fits-one, have you included the parents and have they been informed, parents and students?
We, we already have a small pilot that's rolled out. And so a parent letter went home, but we haven't done a focus group or anything like that yet.
And you will include them in the focus groups as you, you know?
Yeah, we are hoping to definitely get some community input. So right now, we have every freshman in our PFL, which is Personal Financial Literacy, that is doing a blended approach or a personalized approach with Fueled Ed because that's a program that the district already owns through Spring Studio. And we use it for credit recovery currently, so they are doing that. And so the, all of the freshman parents have been informed and they're in contact with the teachers and things like that. But yeah, we are looking at our, in our plan and our strategies of how we're gonna get input and feedback from teachers. For the very small that we did at the SAC one time, the, the feedback from the parents was overwhelmingly positive. It was the zone.
I mean, it's a, all these things you bring into the school, I think are gonna be... I mean, my son went to Falcon, he would love to have done what you're planning on doing.
Oh, well, that's awesome. Good to know. We do also with each of these, so one-size-fits-one and Freshman Academy or programs, they're not our pathways, but for the pathways, we, we have an advisory council in each of those that we've solicited some parent assistance with and we wanna make those bigger as well so that we can keep being on track. And then of course, anything that CTE has to have an advisory council attached to it anyway, so. But yeah, we would really like to partner this and, and do what we can for students and parents because personalized doesn't work if parents aren't partners.
Right, I agree. What do you think?
In accordance to the one-size-fits-one program, I'm not sure how I feel about two teachers and 90 students.
It's, it's four.
It's four teachers?
Yeah, four. Um, do you, do you want me to? So it's two teachers that are content-specific, so two English teachers, then a special ed teacher and a student success coach. So it would be like a paraprofessional.
I, my, my personal opinion on this is that 90 students, knowing students are not gonna function well in one room just because there's gonna be a lot of things going on, it's gonna be hard to focus. It's, it's gonna be a lot of distractions, just student-to-student relationships.
Yeah, we, and we've taken that into consideration and when we pilot, we'll see. Because if 90 becomes a number that we can't handle, we can always adjust that because we're, we're kind of working with a rapid prototyping model so that when we know right away that something's not working, we're gonna have the ability to adjust on with some expediency instead of dragging it out, so to speak. The one thing that helps us is the, the large space. And then we've, we've actually looked with the architects about, we have the capability of blowing out even farther than that, the two rooms into another set of four rooms that are on the side, or I guess it's three, right, Mr. Dorsey, three? On the other side, which would give us four breakout rooms essentially. And the other thing that we're really gonna do is something that elementaries do really well. And for some reason in high school, we think that we should have abandoned it so that I can be the sage on the stage, is station rotation. We don't plan on everybody doing everything at the same time. Some will be with direct instruction, some will be with project-based learning, some will be online, which is the blended component. And then some will be having targeted instruction because they may be, 15 of them are deficient in this particular standard or objective. So yeah, we know, there's a lot of kinks, it's a little scary. Yeah.
I like that you guys are looking at getting the kids a job ready. And there's different pathways for different kids. So some may, the pathway may be two years college, some four years, some not college at all. That's what the, our business community is looking for, people who are ready to, to do the work, who are sufficiently educated enough. That's what education is for, so that you can go out there and make a living. So thank you guys for thinking ahead and having these innovative projects coming. Thank you.
I, I will mention a couple of things. One is that when the Student Board of Representatives gets together next Thursday and talks about these, and that's our model, we might invite you to come, but they will be harder on you about timing than this board is.
Well, then you want me to come.
Because they have to get to class. They're, they're, they're starting the day, but I had to write passes the last time when we went a little bit over. And Board, I wanted, I wanted you to know that Aria has arrived. And so they represented the program really well. Which, she's been a critical part of developing the vision of, particularly of taking the middle years program from Horizon into, into Sand Creek. And that's one of the aspects of the Freshman Academy is to continue that continuity of the learner profile as they come into high school. So glad you're, you're here, you're safe. Glad you got, got to be here.
I'm curious how much flexibility there is for kids to do different things in different pathways. So like, I would have been an advanced academics pathway, but I also took CAD and metal shop and wood shop as a part of my high school experience because I wanted to understand more about the practical pieces of what I was gonna do as a physicist later. So, you know, there are, and I, you know, that piece I would like to know a little more about.
Absolutely. So, so nobody's ever locked into a pathway. What we wanna do though is we wanna paint a really clear picture of what will get you to a specific career. And then students are able to choose. You know, you wouldn't want some, I, I consider it as much of a success if a student comes through our engineering program and says, I, I, no, I don't wanna do that now. And I'm like, that's great. You know, that's, that's fantastic if they figure out that they don't wanna do it before they spend a ton of money on it. So we, we just wanna make sure that students have the ability to see that so that if they wanna follow a pathway all the way through, that they can get the certifications and they can be successful in those areas.
And we run an eight-period day, which gives kids more choice.
Absolutely, yeah. It's very important.
Well, eight periods, two days, sorry.
Yeah.
One other just kind of random thing in, when I taught in Boston, we had a far more flexible model than I've seen out here in terms of student timing. For example, we never hired subs. When there was a sub, there was an assignment posted and we called it responsible freedom. And students knew that assignment would be due, they were responsible for getting it done, they could go wherever they wanted to get it done. They had certain periods in the day where they were allowed to do the same thing, so they could go to a teacher and get help. But the, the important part of that being successful was that we trained them really well as freshmen. So freshmen didn't have as much freedom as they did responsibility because, yeah, you can pick where you wanna be sort of because you have to sign in with me. So you might have a study period, but you're studying in front of Lavier or you're studying in front of this person. And by the time they were sophomores, it was, as long as you have a passing grade, you may choose where you'd like to be. And it worked well because we trained them well. So that would be my one, you know, as you're thinking through it, both in terms of using your Freshman Academy that way, but maybe also collaborating a bunch with a middle school so that they're getting the eighth graders prepared for some of that responsible freedom. Because that's a part of what will make that 90-person room successful is the kids already having been taught the skills that let them stay on task. Because they're capable of it if we give them the tools. We just have to give them the tools early enough that it doesn't blow up in our faces.
Yeah, and interesting sidebar to that is we're doing some anecdotal evidence of the kids that are in PFL doing personalized right now. And they didn't, last semester they had civics and they didn't. And, and a lot of the kids are writing, we want the teacher to give us notes. We, why doesn't the teacher do this? Why does it, because what this causes is a shift in agency away from the teacher to the student and the students don't like it. Now they have to do much more. And I, I couldn't agree with you more when we were looking at orientation. We really have to look at, what are the habits that we need to instill in, in students to be independent learners, right? Because they're not getting a lot of that or, you know, they're relying on the teacher to tell you what the important stuff is. What, what, I have to read a passage and figure out what's important? So they're, yeah, they're bucking a little bit and it's gonna take a little while, but it's a paradigm shift for the students too. That, you know what, the student, the teacher's gonna come alongside you, but they're not the holder of all of the information anymore. So, yeah, we're really excited. It'll be good for kids, it's gonna be bumpy, but then we're gonna get there.
It'll be awesome once it's going. It's just a matter of helping them get the skill to get there, scaffolding it and then breaking the scaffolding.
And correct me if I'm wrong, isn't, isn't the, the additional space you're talking about, is that what you're thinking about pursuing with the election?
Yeah. And Mr. Ridgway has been, he came and kind of listened to all of our woo, grand ideas and, but I think you're gonna make them happen, right?
We.
We are gonna make them happen.
Yeah.
Get these students and parents excited about the program and help them understand the relationship to the importance of that and they'll have the override. And then we as a community can make it happen.
Oh, I can advocate for that.
I think you have significant challenges ahead of you. That'll be very rewarding once it all comes to fruition. Because I think what you're proposing today is what I've thought of the last few years, at least, is the way education is gonna be in the future.
I agree.
Very excited to see this happen.
And another challenge that we have in front of us is there's a lot of schools that are doing some form of personalized, but they're startups. Very few people can we even go look at when we look to go see are converting from a traditional, especially a high school, something the size of that. So, yeah, we're, we're super excited, but we do know. So we're going slow to go fast. Thank you.
Okay, and our next item is the Innovation Plan Review for Springs Ranch.
Hi, Kim Mariotti, Principal at Springs Ranch. And so I'm going to talk about our innovation plan and what we've been doing. The first thing I'd like to do is thank Donna behind the screen there. She has been a huge help. Spent time with me on the phone and through various emails, just with the different policy numbers and that, she's been fabulous. So thank you, Donna, back there. So while, while reviewing our plan, we were reminded of our academic performance targets that we set three years ago. And those were professional learning, community practices, implementation of new state standards and best instructional practices. So three years later, we continue to focus on these targets. And I didn't... So three years later, we continue to focus on these targets. And I didn't create a PowerPoint. I just wanted to share personally with you guys. So I think it's always exciting to know that you set goals at one time and you're still working on those. So I wanted to share some of the ways that we have utilized our innovation plan. One was creating a master schedule, which includes intervention time for each grade level. Our support staff is able to provide needed interventions for students, which includes gifted and talented, ELL reading interventionist, special education, and the teachers themselves working with students. We've really focused on that in the past two years with great success. Our early release days have been used wisely and with integrity. Our teachers meet as grade levels, as support teams, and as interventionists on these days, looking at data and working together to provide what is best and needed for students. The team discussions also focus on state content standards. So with that, we meet with our teams at least once, once a month as administrators. And as true professional communities, we look at every teacher and student's data. Teachers are able to speak to every one of their students as to what the needs are, about their growth, and about what kind of intervention they are receiving. This is exciting as administrators and as a school to see this true change, and it may it has made a big difference. We are able to use the curriculum and resources that we feel are needed for our school. This year, we adopted the Sunday Reading Intervention Program and have seen our students' data improve and their literacy skills increase. We have approximately twelve Sunday groups going throughout the day, along with after-school tutoring. It is the program we've been looking for and appreciate the opportunity to choose what was best for our school and our students. And I provided a lot of lot of pages of data for you to look at, but we were able to share that in December with the literacy team that came to our school. Also, with the innovation plan, we have been able to have a kindergarten cutoff date that we feel better serves kindergarteners. That's August fifteenth for our zone. And with choice and class size, we were able to better serve our students by monitoring those class sizes. Evaluation of staff continues to be a focus for us as well. We are in classrooms often and meet with teachers after observations. Part of our evaluations and discussions focus on our zone goals of higher-order questioning, checks for understanding and feedback, and modeling, chunking, and scaffolding. We also look for these instructional practices when we observe in all the schools in our zones during instructional rounds. Having these areas to focus on helps us as administrators develop consistency and helps us lead discussions with teachers to become better at their instruction. Also, with evaluations, we are systematic with data gathering in our conversations with teachers and staff. These continue to help develop expectations that meet or exceed state teacher standards. And finally, we have been able to choose what professional development is best for our staff and student needs. These have included Google, Google for Education, Engage in Eureka Math, Kagan Cooperative Learning, and Capturing Kids' Hearts. So with all of this, we would like to continue our innovation plan. The revisions are simply changes in the policy numbers and descriptions. The existing plan continues to meet our needs at Springs Ranch, and we appreciate your support.
I have to say, I was very excited to see all of the well-above-average progress and the that was consistent not only across the school, but then to see it especially with the kids who are well below benchmark. That's incredibly awesome because that's a measure of the growth, and you don't necessarily get that. Some of the data we see when a kid is still below benchmark, you just see still below benchmark, but it's the growth and the amount of growth some of those kids have to do is pretty phenomenal. So to see how that growth is is moving is really awesome. Great job.
Thank you. We're excited, too. And Marie, I wanted to thank you for writing handwritten notes to our custodians for the snow removal. I mean, who gets a handwritten note anymore? That was that was very, very kind and very, they really appreciate it. So thank you.
I'll tell you what, writing that note was way easier than picking up all the shovels they did. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and so if everyone's all right, we'll move that forward to be approved. Okay, so let's move that to the March tenth meeting, please. And next is Mr. Zach Craddock with the Individualized Education.
Good evening. I'm Zach Craddock with Individualized Education. Thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight to talk about our department. First, we're going to talk with Special Education and give you just a brief overview of what we have been doing this year, key initiatives, and then plans for next year. First, we have implemented our standards-based IEP initiative. That's a directive from the Colorado Department of Education in our K-five classrooms. We started that last, I would say, spring of two thousand and fourteen, and with our just our pre-K, phased that in, rolled it out, K-five. We're in the middle of that this year, and we have plans to move that six-twelve for the sixteen-seventeen school year. That is taking our Colorado academic standards and aligning them to our IEP goals, and that's an initiative from CDE. Second, we have the Sunday system, which Ms. Mariotti mentioned at Springs Ranch. We piloted that in select schools last school year in the fourteen-fifteen. And then this year, we have actually taken and expanded that to all of our significant support need classrooms. So that's every secondary classroom, and then select programs that we have at Evans, Springs Ranch, Ridgeview, Odyssey, Falcon Elementary, and Woodman Hills at those elementary schools. Stetching is using as well. They do not have an SSN room, but Mr. Moulton has elected to use that in his building. We're seeing it across the district. What the Sunday system is, is it's a research-based intervention that is Orton-Gillingham-based, which is multisensory instruction. And we say research scientific is the highest level of fidelity that you can get as far as teaching students that have struggling, they're struggling readers, and it hits all five components of literacy. We supported our teachers and paraprofessionals, both both populations, with two full days of training, and every zone received a full coaching day in the spring semester with a nationally leveled trainer. So we're real excited about that. We are progress monitoring that through Special Education explicitly with these two groups of kids, with AmesWeb, which is a progress monitoring system, and TS Gold, and that is for our lowest-level learners that have pre-literacy skills. So we're using two systems independently of this to audit the success of that, and we're seeing very good results from that so far. Our secondary co-teaching support will begin next year. We actually have a kickoff with our secondary administrators next Thursday afternoon. And we're looking at how can we do better in the classroom for eighty-five percent of our special education students in the secondary role? The other fifteen percent are in highly specialized programs, and we have Sunday supports and literacy supports. But eighty-five percent of our students are in the general environment, getting instruction in a co-teaching model. And we're doing that through through two two ways, two systems. Number one is the use of graphic organizers, specific graphic organizers that will reinforce a concept visually, not just textually, but reinforce it visually, and then really strengthening our ability to improve our special education's teachers' ability to reinforce academic vocabulary. So we kick that off next Thursday with our administrators. We have an action plan that supports that and timelines that we can move forward with for the sixteen-seventeen school year. With Sunday system for sixteen-seventeen, we'll expand that out to all of our affective needs classrooms, all of our social communications classrooms across the district. And we'll also expand that to all of our moderate needs in our charter schools to give them that resource as well. What we've received so far is that it is working when used with fidelity, and we want to make sure schools have ample opportunities and programs available to meet the needs of their kids. And then last for special ed is our capstone project. We've identified two students. Ms. Rowley at Sand Creek High School is going to work with Ethan Steenberg, our transition coordinator, and we're going to get a jumpstart on this. So we're going to put the capstone in place for two select students, pilot it, model it, put fiscal resources behind it. So these students, at the end of their senior year, will present a portfolio project that says they have met the requirements of their ICAP, and they are ready to graduate. Our hope is that we learn from this process next year before the seventeen-eighteen, when we have to mandate it per state graduation guidelines. For English Language Development, we we presented Martina and Inez were with me last month, and so you've seen a lot of this. We had a PLC today, a professional learning community with our teachers. We're going to continue our instructional alignment. What do we want students to know and be able to do, and how do we know when they do that? So that is that is our number-one focus in English Language Development. It directly relates to student achievement. We want to make sure our English language learner plans are solid, that they meet federal and state requirements. We're going to continue to focus on that. And of course, parent engagement is a key piece for the Title III requirements that we have to fulfill. Gifted Education, we're continuing to improve our identification process. Patty Vale and I will be before you next month to go more in depth on this. But we have she well, she, not me, she has done a fantastic job with our gifted facilitators, all of our principals in all the buildings, really looking at students that we were, we, the adults, were not identifying in the past. And one of the key areas was increasing our underrepresented demographics. And to date, so far this year, we have increased that by twenty-one percent through revising our academic testing, revising our gifted identification procedures. We have identified more students in the African-American and Hispanic subgroups that qualify as gifted. On well, last, no, I'm sorry, this past Monday night, we kicked off our secondary SENG training, which is supporting the emotional need of gifted learners. And we kick off our elementary parent training at Meridian Ranch next Monday night. So that is four consecutive weeks for each group. So we're going to be busy Monday nights. We have a great group that turned out, we we capped it at twenty, and we have twenty. So we know we have a need for that next year. We're going to look at doing that fall and spring so we can double the capacity there. And lastly, just like our ELL plans, we have advanced learn plans. So we want to get more proficient at those. We want to do better with those. We want to make sure that we're really capturing what the student, the area they're gifted in, and their programming, and what's different about their education is aligned in those plans. Our counselors and threat response. With counselors, we have and and administrators and school resource officers and district security, nurses, director designated, a wide variety. We have vastly improved our processes and increased our training on threat suicide assessments. We held three half-day sessions over the month of December so that all administrators and everybody I just mentioned in that target audience could get fully updated on the Claire Davis Act that we'll be rolling out next year. We feel we have a very solid process when followed. We have updated our forms. We've streamlined them. We've made it more efficient. And our counselors were a big part of this as well. Another initiative, or I guess, well, it is an initiative that Dr. Lou Fletcher and I are working on is we're we're looking at what are our counselors currently doing and evaluating, being evaluated on, and is that aligned to the ASCA standards? And that's the American School Counselor Association, and they have a set of national standards. And so we just started that process last month. Counselors have those standards. They have our CD standards, and they're crosswalking those to find gaps and define overlays where where they're similar. And they're they're providing to us a time study that will give us a sample of in one week's of their of their work week, one week, what is their time spent on? Is the majority of their time spent on what we and principals and school leaders feel needs to do is the most important? And so we'll take that data, we'll review it, and our our lead counselors across the zones are leading us through that process. So we're excited about that, and I anticipate a report to you late, perhaps late summer, on where to go with that. College in Colorado improvements. Holly Franklin, our Fort Wayne Pathway Specialist, she has vastly improved our ability to respond to schools with college in Colorado. And that's the online forum where we house our ICAPS. We're more responsive to our ICAP advisors, and that does include counselors. But we're we're still not where we want to be on that. Our ICAPS are housed in college in Colorado, and every single school in our district is further along. They have more completed now than they did this time last year. So we're doing much better there, but that is the efforts of the schools and the ICAP advisors. Excel and expulsions. So with Excel, we have expanded that program this year a full day. We no longer stop at noon. We stop at two-thirty. So we've moved that to a full school day, four days a week. Friday, the the students are still out. We've also increased the accountability there, and when we talk about that is with Excel Plus. That is an early intervention program. The principals can work with Mr. Hahn on students that perhaps are on a habitually disruptive contract, or they're on that track that that is not in a good way. And that is a four- to six-week intervention where we remove them. They come into our Excel program. I've increased support with a point-five special education teacher, and Thursday afternoons, we have a school psychologist that comes in for counseling. So with the full day increased academic and that school counselors, or I'm sorry, school psychologist support, we're able, we've been successful. Twenty kids have utilized it this year, and seventeen of those twenty have returned to their school within the prescribed timeline. Three needed a little longer stay to get more help, but seventeen of those twenty were able to return. We've also improved the expulsion process. We've separated the powers of that this year. So Mr. Hahn in the past was the expulsion officer and the Excel director. Now he is the Excel director, and all expulsions come requests for expulsions come through my office, and then we work directly with Dr. Fletcher as the expulsion officer. He rules, reports back, and then we program for the kids as needed. So it separates that. It's a much cleaner process, and and I hope the principals think it is more efficient for them. And that's, I was right on. Okay, I timed that. Any questions for me?
So the piloting for the the capstone piece over at Sand Creek, that's working with kids. Are those kids who maybe wouldn't have necessarily been able to meet graduation requirements before without this option, or would it have taken longer?
Based on the guidance that we've been provided, yes, that we the students that we are looking at are one percent students. So those students that are that would take the alternate assessment, that they're on a revised curriculum. We have identified, and we're very early, we just met Monday, actually. We identified two seniors, next rising seniors for next year, that we would like to pilot this with. We'll have to have discussions at their annual review with their parents and and talk to them about it. But we're real excited about, we really want to take our success skills, part of that that new graduation requirement, and the capstone, and empower the student to present to the principal, to the zone leader, to the board, to the to the CEO, that I I have fulfilled my ICAP requirements as measured by this. We don't know where it's going to go. The door's kind of wide open. That's why we want to get a jumpstart before the state says, do it, do it now.
Will it impact their ability to get other transition services post eighteen?
No, ma'am. And the great thing with that is Ethan is our transition coordinator. Ultimately, we look as this is, is this is their exit ticket that says, I'm proving to you I'm ready for eighteen-to-twenty-one-year-old services. So we're we're long-term. That's where we want to see that this is the student's demonstration of learning and knowledge that they they can show. We based on this capstone, I am ready to enter your program, not because of my age, because of my performance. That's our long-term vision.
You stated that there were twenty-one children that were identified as being gifted?
Twenty twenty-one percent. We've increased our twenty-one percent. Yes, sir.
You know, like I said, twenty-one kids, twenty-one percent. It seems like we use numbers, but thank you very, very much. You know, I mean, it means a great deal to identify those people who those kids who were who would not have otherwise been identified. You guys made some changes with your curriculum and things like that, and put more focus on that.
It has been a heavy focus on our gifted department and and our principals have done outstanding job supporting that.
Well, thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated.
Yes, sir.
You know, I've always been interested in what our counselors, what we think our counselors do and what they actually do on a day-to-day basis. So that that's something real exciting for me that you're going to bring back to us, like what the standards are.
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe what they do different than what I, as a parent, thought a counselor did is not, it does not seem to be what they do on a daily basis. So it's been a real eye-opener for me on what counselors actually do in high schools now, and.
Should have that. We we meet with them before spring break, so we hope to get all their data compiled in one summer report for you, and whenever you'd like it, just let me know.
I'm assuming that data may not just help with prioritization, but also looking at workload and whether or not. So sometimes the things you end up spending a lot of time on are because they're crisis situations. But once you have a certain number of students you're responsible for, the amount of your day that's dedicated to that crisis versus other things that you're also responsible for. I I think it may be interesting to see kind of how that piece plays out and whether it gives us that information on on what we're asking them to do versus what is possible for a person to do in the amount of time that they have with kids. Because I know that organization also has standards for number of kids per counselor, which next to no one, I think, in the state of Colorado follows because of the cost. But I I think it'll be informative in a lot of different ways, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we have no other questions on that piece, then let's move to, I believe, the next item is you as well. The new job description for the TOSEF Response Team Leader.
Yes, ma'am. So this is a a request for a new job description. So this is a, a request for a new job description. This is a teacher on a special assignment, and it is for a response team leader. And you just mentioned this, so crisis, we must drop what we're doing and help students, whether it is DHS report due to abuse, neglect, whatever that may be, or whether it is a possible threat or slash suicide assessment. And so we, we trained all of our administrators in a wide variety in December at three different meetings, and we've seen really good things come of that. And how do we, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword. I am getting, and we are getting as a district, much better quality reporting on that. That we're, we know now, we did not know perhaps in the past. And as a result of that, we have seen Dave Watson, Dave Pratt, Dr. Fletcher, Kim Boyd, myself kind of lead this process. We have seen a need and a request for a teacher on special assignment, a response team leader. This person would be part of a three-man group. Those three people, that group would consist of this person, a licensed clinical school social worker, which we already have a job description for we employ, and a school resource officer. And that three-man team, in our eyes, would be the first responders to schools in the event of a ready-op alert for a threat slash suicide assessment. To date, since our training, we have had 124 since the first week of December. The average time is 1.5 hours to complete those. So we feel that that, that is easily, just to date since the first of December to today, we, we can, with this, we would be, allow school administrators almost 250 man-hours back in their classroom supporting instruction. I, I think zone leaders would agree that this would, this would help the efficiency of schools, and this would help our, our principals, because it does take time away, and we can't, we cannot afford to drop the ball on one of these. This is, is approved and can be funded along with the, the social worker through Medicaid funds. This has no impact on, on general fund. Medicaid has approved this, and our Medicaid review board has approved this position if we choose to move forward in it. So primary response is first responders to schools, to school principals, their need, their counselors, supporting the proper documentation, first the care, the documentation, and the support needed for follow-up, as well as re-entry meetings. They would also compile all the data reports that were required to provide under the Claire Davis Act, and, and we would look at trends across the district that would help provide professional development. However, principals needed that around these areas. Also, they would serve as our primary, primary resource to school principals around anti-bullying in our schools. That, well, this would be a three-man team. This would, a three-man team that would comprise this. We feel that this, this TOSEF is needed because, and it has an education background. The other one has a social worker and a law enforcement. And we need those pieces because of our outside resources, Aspen Point, Peak View, Cedar Springs. They, they have, they know those avenues. The law enforcement has obviously the legal aspect that we have to comply with. But this, this position's critical because they understand how schools operate. They, they understand the culture of schools, the delineation of duties, the lingo, just the acronyms we have, the sheer number of acronyms. They know, if, does this student have an IEP? A resource officer may not ask that, but a, a school person would know that. So we've left it very wide open. It's licensed, it can have a principals, it can have a special service provider, an administrative. We're, we're just looking for the best possible person to be a part of that team.
And I want to observe kind of on the record that this is a heavy load. It's a load that's already being carried, but it's being carried by, by a distributed team of people. And so I'm very proud, and I can't be specific, I can't praise anyone specifically, but I'm very proud that over Christmas break, we had 10 notifications through Safe to Tell related to harm to self or harm to others. None of them went even an hour without a principal or somebody else responding and saying, here's the student's address so that we could do a welfare check, or con, here's the, you know, contact information. Sometimes we get Safe to Tell reports that, we get them from Safe to Tell, and we don't even know what school it's for. They'll put it out statewide, because somebody will say, my friend named blank-blank is, is saying something on Snapchat or texting. And so our principals will jump in, and I will jump in, and we'll look at Infinite Campus and see if that's one of our students, and one time it was. So these responses are happening right now, but they're not, they're happening due to enormous care and effort, but not because of a systematic process. And so that's what I, why I'm so supportive of using Medicaid funds in this way is because we don't want to be around when even one of those reports slips through the cracks. And it's because of effort and care that one hasn't. This will add a system to that effort and care.
I would add system, effort, and a level of expertise. Because you can be a very caring person and still maybe not quite hit the mark that you needed to hit, because it's not something you personally deal with every day. And if you have three people who this is what they're doing, those same three people responding to 124 incidents gives them all of a sudden way more experience and ability to read and a way to help people quicker, because they're building a knowledge base. They're, they're going to come in with a set of knowledge skills that you're already looking for, and then they're very quickly going to build an even bigger knowledge base because of the number of circumstances they're encountering where they're helping. And so I, I appreciate this, because I know the number of people it will hit, and, and the number of people that are involved in the school system trying to figure out what to do and having that go-to person who really knows, I think will be critical to making a better difference for our students.
And this is available, this program nationwide, to all school districts?
Safe to tell, sir?
No, the, having a, this paid by Medicaid.
If, if districts choose to do it, we're the first district that I am aware that's taking it to this level. But it is approved, it is allowable under federal and state Medicaid rules to pay a salary and benefits for a social worker and for this position, because it directly affects student health. Yes, sir.
National trend centers, got it, yes. And the hope is, or the thought is, is that having a single person responsible for this array of challenges will prevent or reduce the risk of someone falling through the cracks?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And it is a three, and it would be a three-man team. So this group would operate as a team, and they each have their specialized areas. But they, they, they are the first responders, they are the data collectors, they are the trainers. They, they are, they're the point of this, they are the point of this.
You mentioned anti-bullying, how does this, how does that fall into this exactly?
Well, what this, so we, we don't have, and that's a good thing. We don't have threat assessments all the time. So there, there will be time where they'll, they'll be down. And there are times where they can schedule such as professional development days when students aren't in session, trainings for schools. So if a school principal in their climate survey, or through a professional learning community, or through a parent request feels that we want to focus in on, let's say, anti-bullying interventions in this, in a sixth grade, this would be our team that would be that go-to. Right now, there's not one dedicated source, and we wanted, I wanted to, that's a need in our district, I feel, that we had a group of professionals, law enforcement, social work, and educational, that the principals could go to, or zone leaders could go to, and, and say, hey, I really want to focus in on this. Could you come provide some professional development to my staff on this? And, and we could work on this together. That way, we were more systemic across the district as to what interventions we're using around anti-bullying.
Will they intervene in a, in like specific bullying cases where a student says, I'm being bullied?
They can, primarily, that goes to Dr. Fletcher, I believe, if brought to his attention. But they would be more than, and we can adjust this any way we need to, but they can support schools and principals however needed in that area.
Thank you.
Any further questions? So are we on?
This is across the district, right? Not just at one secondary or primary?
This is district-wide.
Okay.
Every school, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I do have another question then. Obviously, it's a three-person team, right? But we do have more than one resource officer in the district. Will this person be teaming with the various resource officers?
Yes, that's where, that's where it's unique in that, and when our school resource officers get, right now, our current officers get involved in this, they're, they're the first ones on the scene. So when we get a ready-op from, from that system, when the school reports that this is an issue, this team would mobilize and go, and they would immediately then assist the school. And the idea is that they then become, they're the first responders, they then kind of take over that, and then it allows that school to focus in then on the operations of that building, because we have these dedicated professionals there. But our school resource officer and our mobile team will have to build very solid relationships with the school resource officers in all of our schools. We have to build the trust first.
So my understanding of this is there's one team, correct?
Yes, sir.
What, what happens if there's more than one incident at a time?
You're exactly right. So we've talked about that, we've talked about that with Dave Watson and Dave Pratt. If that happens, we have to splinter that off. We have to splinter that off. A decision from, from that group has to be made, who goes where. And, and don't forget, right now, we're handling that in our schools, each school's handling that separately. So with this, even if, even if we have two threat assessments needed at the same, in the same hour, we still, with that three-man team, would have one expert there that could be there at that school. We could do up to three at a time, for our capacity, it would be three at a time based on this model. We feel right now, based on the ready-op and the data that we've collected, we can manage, we can, the, two, two would stress us, three would, would be very hard to do, but we would have to splinter that group off, and we would at least have one person at each site that would be able to provide the expert assistance.
Thank you.
Great questions, Josh, thank you. So is there anything else, anyone else wants to add? Okay, so we're all okay with that, moving this to the next meeting fraction? Okay, so can we move this to March 10th, please? And our next presentation is DAC bylaws review. And I will be right back, but you guys can start.
Hi, I'm Erica West, I'm the DAC chairperson. Over the last year, probably, we've been going over the bylaws and trying to revise them. And there will be more changes to come, but this is what we've got so far that we felt that needed to be changed right now. So. Let me see, yep, there we go. In the mission, it's originally said that we were a district advisory council instead of the district accountability advisory committee, which is what the CDE calls us. And also, same with the SAC, the school advisory or school accountability committees. And then Article III was totally redone, because in August, we had Darcy Hutchins from CDE come to a train with us, and she showed us what exactly the responsibilities of a DAC are, and what the responsibilities of a SAC are. And so we took those and put them in to the bylaws. Do I, do you guys want me to read them? Thank you. Again, more changes have been, let me see. I'm sorry, this is, this is where I'm at. The membership, sorry. We changed the wording, and then we dropped the members at large from five down to three. We have one right now. We thought that five was a bit much. Also, in Section 2, it was the, we want each SAC to have an alternate. So if that representative can't be there, their alternate can vote. So we're not left without, without a quorum. And it explains on exactly who and how long the DAC memberships are going to be. And then also in Section 5 down, or I'm sorry, Section 6, the voting members, it says who can vote and who it doesn't have a vote also. And then it revised, we revised to the, what the names of the officers are going to be. And that, it used to be that we elected them on the first meeting. We thought, well, let's all get together and meet with the new SAC representatives and then decide. I have to tell a story. The first DAC meeting I went to was the first DAC meeting of the season, and me and Dave Rex, our chair and vice chair that year, and we couldn't vote, because we were brand-new members, because nobody wanted it. So with it being the second meeting, we have a better chance of them being approved, like approved by the board, and also knowing what they're getting themselves into. I didn't, I don't mind at all, I like what I do. And then the biggest thing we've needed to change, I apologize for not moving with myself. The next one. It's the quorum and voting. It took us from the August meeting to the December meeting to vote on anything, because we couldn't get a quorum of two-thirds of our membership, our approved membership. So we wanted to take it down to a simple majority. We, and also at least one representative from each zone. We quabbled about the zone, but decided that if all five schools from one zone are not there, something's wrong. That means they don't want to vote on something. So we decided to go ahead and keep that in there. And I believe that is the rest, that is all the changes. Any questions?
I just have to say, going to the meeting last night, not ever, not having been in, you know, a year and a half, it was well-done, what you've, you've done now with the DAC. And every seat was full, and you were right on time with your meeting, and all your topics were so relevant. And I just have to give you great props for what you've done with the DAC and how well it is going now. So thank you for all your time and effort you have put into that, it is amazing. Very good.
So you're looking for us to not put this on the next meeting, but to wait another month, because you have to have the DAC meet again?
We would like these changes to be put on this meeting, or the next, this coming meeting. So the quorum can be set.
Oh.
Yes.
Makes sense.
That makes sense.
Is there anything?
Yes, correct. We're, the bylaws committee is going to be meeting, and by your next work session, we will have the rest of the changes.
And so Mr. Farmer is here from Mr. Miller's office, and they've also done a review, and they, they've identified some technical adjustments that they are going to communicate with the, the DAC about through Dr. Fletcher and Ms. West. And so they, they may, there may be some things in this revision that you will tweak or amend then as you get a second look, as you get a kind of a second bite at this. Are there any things that you, you want to identify right now, tonight? Fair enough.
So there's nothing, nothing catastrophic if we approve it, even though there's some technical glitches that will need to be addressed, because we're only, basically, this will be in place for about a month and a half, correct?
Tim Farmer, School District Attorney. I think that the fact of the matter is there's a number of statutory requirements that aren't necessarily reflected in this draft. So I would say, because they're not in this draft, it doesn't mean they're not going to apply. It just means that they're not in the bylaws. As a sort of best practices matter, it would be nice to have the language in the bylaws. So I think that it's just sort of a matter of inserting some, some important elements before it's adopted.
May I give one example, Tim?
Yeah.
When a parent who is employed by the district is a member of either a SAC or a DAC, they can't fill both of those categories. That's in statute. We comply with that already, but we don't incorporate that into our bylaws.
Yeah, it's sort of a conflict of interest provision, it's in statute, it's not in the bylaws right now, but we'll plug that in there before y'all vote on it.
Okay, so the technical glitches you're going to plug in before our March 10th meeting, correct? So that we're meeting that piece, that's what you're telling us?
Yep.
Which is slightly different than what I heard before. Does that have to do those tech, because the technical pieces are in?
I, I think what we're trying to say is what you just saw on the overhead might not be what you're voting on at the next meeting, if you guys are okay with that.
Does that work with what DAC had to do? Okay.
Yeah, but the changes aren't going to be subs, real substantive sort of, you know, it's not going to totally.
There are things that are statutorily required, and therefore the DAC couldn't choose to say we don't want that in our bylaws anyway, because it's in statute.
Right.
Right, so, okay. I just want to make sure we're not stepping on DAC at the same time, because there, you know, sometimes there's a perception that that's occurred, so I want to make sure we're kind of all crystal clear on that piece.
Yeah.
I know you wouldn't take it that way.
And in fairness, they, they've done a great, they did a great job on that draft. I guess these are just sort of technical legalese-type things that, that we'd want to add in there, so.
Okay, perfect. So then Donna, you, you have that, right? So then Donna, you, you have that, right? So we're going to move this forward to March 10th, but Tim is going to submit some technical edits by the deadline, so that we have those technical pieces in it as well. Perfect. So the next is the Primary Literacy Performance Report by Christy Rigdon.
Good evening, Christy Rigdon, Coordinator of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. We're going to get right into the data, because all of you are so well-versed in our primary literacy data through our reports. This graph shows our kindergarten first and, first, second, and third grades over three years' time now, two and a half years' time. So the gray bar represents 13, 14, green is 14, 15, and orange is this year. So you can see that we're only halfway through the years, and the, the little bars in the middle, that represents our mid-year points. So what we are anticipating is in third grade, that we will see the great growth that we had last year in third grade. Same with kindergarten. We will be closely watching first grade and second grade, well, all grades, but in particular, first and second are concerns. You can see that in second grade, there's not a, a lot of growth that occurs. This is a national trend. We're doing some program evaluation of our interventions and our instruction to see what is the root cause of this, and we suspect that it goes really back to what's happening in first grade, because you can see over time, in first grade, second semester, not a lot of growth going on. And so we're wondering if maybe those skills so important to master in first grade are getting stuck, and if there's something that we can do differently to, to support our first graders, so that they are stronger in second grade. Then we broke it down by zone. Otherwise, it just got too messy. So here is our Falcon Zone. You can see that Falcon Elementary is really going strong this first semester. Meridian Ranch, they have seen strong increases in where they started at the beginning of the year. So we, we anticipate that to continue. And Woodman Growth, or Woodman Hills has shown growth too, in where they started at the beginning of the year. Here we have the Power Zone. So with Odyssey, with Odyssey, they're, they're a little bit below where they were last year this time of year. So we'll be watching that. Ridgeview, they are, they've made some good gains from where they were, and this is percentage of students at benchmark. So we're continuing to watch Stetson and Odyssey and Ridgeview. Here we have the Sand Creek Zone. And if you compare the beginning of the year orange bars to the beginning of the year green bars, all three schools have had a lot more growth this first semester than they did for semester last year. So we'll be excited to watch that continue. Here is our iConnect Zone. So there's only an orange bar for this year for Rocky Mountain Classical, Classical Academy and Imagine, because this is the first year that they have been with the ELAT grant. So it, we have pulled their data from different sources in the past. So we now have them all on board this year with our ELAT project. And Pipsil, this is their second year with the ELAT project. You can see really, really good growth with, with those schools. I want to call out, in, in particular, Spring Studio for Academic Excellence. They have gone, they took a look at what was happening in their schools last year, in their school last year, and did not like what was happening, and made some major revamping in curriculum, staffing, training, everything. They hit parent accountability, everything. And you can see that their percentage of students has, has increased a lot that first semester. Yes. Yep. Yes.
Hopefully some best practices they can share.
Exactly. And we are all learning from each other within the district, for sure. So this table shows our kindergarten through third grade students in all of our schools. How we determine the, the progress category is based on national data of all students who are using the Amplify system. So they would say, beginning of the year, this is your percentage of students at benchmark in K through 3. And so comparing to like schools, where are you at in your progress? So you can see, most of our schools are at well above or above average progress, which is really exciting. So we want to see these percentages on this table go up. For our well below benchmark students, we want to see these numbers go down over the year. And again, most of our schools are making well above average progress in reducing the number of students well below benchmark. So more good things. Some other things happening in the district over the, over the fall and the spring is Fall Literacy Camp. In the fall, we had about 60 participants in three sites, which included seven teachers and seven paraprofessionals supporting them. What we found in the data, we have to remember that these are very small ends when you get down to breaking them apart by grade level. But the data suggests that in first and third, the students that participated in Lit Camp made stronger gains in composite scores than those stu, those like students who did not participate. So all students on RE plans were invited, and so these, these students made better gains in first and third grade. Second graders composite did not reflect a larger gain, but when digging deeper into the data in an oral reading fluency probe, the accuracy score showed a greater slope than like students who did not participate. So we know that as accuracy improves, fluency and comprehension follow. So we'll be, we'll keep watching those kids as well. So again, fall semester highlights, and in the spirit of it being a learning organization and learning from each other, District 49 hosted a, really a statewide Leaders in Literacy Summit. We had 86 participants from the district and around the state. Myon, our digital library vendor, co-collaborated with us on, on this project. They brought in Jason Turner from Metometrics to talk about the importance of early literacy and the impact of that when, when students become adults, and it was great. We had presenters, the, the presenters that we invited were from out of district. They were the schools that we, as a district, went and visited and learned from. So they were people from Cheyenne Mountain Elementary, Centennial Elementary. Peter talked about getting your board on board. We had James Irwin, Lynn Fitzhugh, who is working with Odyssey. And we had CDE Office of Literacy also talked about Read Act data and what's, what's, what we are finding working. They highlighted one of the districts that is showing great skills anonymously, and it happened to be our district, so, there. Yeah. I can say that now. We also extended our Myon contract another two years, thanks to the MLO funds for all of our elementary schools. Two of our charter schools also saw the excitement that we saw with Myon and have, have purchased Myon for their schools to Pipsil and Imagine. Yep. Over the course of December and January, Zone Leaders, Peter, Amber Westine, Zach Craddock, and I went and visited all of the schools, and we had leadership teams in those schools present in these six areas. And some commonalities that we found is that everybody is so targeted and fixated on our goal of every student leaving third grade a proficient reader. And that kind of intensity is really exciting to, to, to witness. Some other things are, every school made scheduling changes. Either they brought in intervention blocks, increased their literacy block, things like that. There's, everybody, most schools adjusted staffing by bringing on instructional coaches or reading interventionist paraprofessionals. We have an increase in improved targeted focus on data analysis and progress monitoring. We've got this great data. We're much more proficient in using it to change our instruction now. Like I said, with changes in our literacy block with our core instruction, we've got that improved time and intensity when it comes to literacy. And it was really interesting to see that where schools really focused on developing that love of reading, that, you know, that culture where everybody is involved, from, from the front office staff to the leaders, to the teachers, to the students, it, and had that attitude of whatever it takes, they're showing really, really good growth. The last piece is we're, we're seeing engaged, an increased engagement of, of our families. So for example, of some of those community events, Remington hosted a Myon night, and they had 150 students with their accompanying families. So at least 300 people in the building to learn more about Myon. The teachers would give all the same presentation in their classroom, and then students demonstrated for their parents what it was like to use this great digital library. Walking around, the kids were so engaged, they weren't paying any attention to people coming in and out of the room, or the teachers presenting. The great thing about that night as well, it is that we had the president of Myon accompany us on a visit to Remington to see his product in action, and he was really impressed with the work that we're doing in District 49. We had an opportunity to have an extensive conversation with him afterward, and are looking at broadening our collaboration with Myon. So anticipate more to come in that area. It's just a little teaser for you. Falcon Elementary School, they will have their one, one book, one school read again this year. Last year, they did Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. This year, they're doing Charlotte's Web, so watch for that. They are, also have a community reader program. So I would encourage you to contact Crystal Bonkhouse and arrange your time to go and read to kids over at Falconel. Parent, there's a parent breakfast over Evans to talk about good reading instruction and, and their reading program there. We had a CKL, or will have a CKLA night at Meridian. Most schools, I would say, have book clubs, reading contests to get kids really engaged and, and participating in reading. Ridgeview has a little lending library. They're looking to install another one. So that's a great way to engage the, the community, and of course, we have Pike's Peak Library District partnerships as well. So in professional development, the Reading Foundations Academy has been a big hit. It is the course to be in, and we are full for our April class. We are turning people away. That's a 21-hour course. The teachers are willing to give up their time to learn more about how do I be a better reading teacher. So we'll see at least two more sessions next year. I anticipate that they will probably have more like four of the Reading Foundations Academy. So to leverage, you know, we've got, by the end of this year, we'll have over 100 teachers and leaders trained in reading instruction, in addition to whatever they have learned through college and over the years. So that's super exciting. I love talking about this stuff. Gets me going. Okay, things to come. So in the fall, we had our Leaders in Literacy Summit, which involved outside people. April 1st, we will be doing an internal Pursuing Peak Literacy Summit in which our, our principals and school leaders and teacher leader teams and teachers will be able to learn from each other. So what are those best practices that are happening in, in all of our schools? So what are you doing with data management? What are you doing to engage your community? How are, how are you making this work in an online blended kind of situation? So we're really excited about that. We have a couple of outside presenters also coming in from Family Engagement at CDE, the library person from CDE, and Representative of Bright, Bright, Bright by Three. So we're getting kids, we're getting to our kids before they even come to us as kindergarteners. So we're starting to branch out even there. We will be renewing our ELAT grant, so we'll be going into our fourth year as the, in the ELAT project. We, I am also working with three schools to pursue the Early Literacy Grant. This is another pot of money that is less restrictive than RE funds are. So I'll be working with Stetson Elementary, Remington, and Odyssey on that. Our differentiated pathways to comply with the Read Act is to include all of our learners. Some of our learners have not been captured through the Read Act because they couldn't access DIBELS Next as an appropriate assessment to, to, to determine a significant reading deficiency. That has changed with more guidelines through CDE, so we'll be including all, all of our learners in that. This year, last year, the Super Institute for DIBELS was in Las Vegas. This year, it's in Denver. So we'll be able to, to send more staff to the DIBELS Super Institute, which is a great training. Read Camp, our buttons have gone out, or invitations have gone out to students. We are, we will be sending out 562 invitations for 240 slots. I know, it's coveted spot. And we've made some staffing changes. We want to reduce the amount of time that students train teachers for the, for the second and the third, third session, basically. And this year, we have an exciting partnership with UCCS. We have two grad students helping us with revise our curriculum. We will have up to 60 undergraduate teacher candidates that we will be able to push in through the month of June. So that will be an additional adult in every classroom, which will be great. And let's see, oh, we will also have graduate students working in a much more clinical fashion with several of our students who will be going through the Read Camp. So lots of exciting things happening, and more exciting things to come. So it's always a pleasure to come and present to you on Primary Literacy. Questions?
I just had a, a question or clarification on one of the data tables, because I think I heard you say this, but I wasn't sure. And it's on the ones that give the progress category. They look at, when that progress category is determined, it's looking at student demographics and comparing it to other schools with the same demographics to determine that reading.
So it looks at other schools that start at the same percentage of like students at
Okay.
Benchmark, yeah. So likes, so for example, taking Banning Lewis. So other schools, starting with 69% of students at benchmark, what is the progress they make over time for the year?
So that's the only, the only demographic information they're using, then they're not looking at some of the other factors that we would look at, right?
Not that I'm aware of, yes, and this is
That is correct, actually. I dug into that with them. They're only looking at the BOY benchmark, and they slice it, once you get up to about 55, it depends on the grade level, but between 55 and 60%, they're putting schools in bands of 2% increments. So these are very similar performing schools that we're benchmarking against. So to see all that purple and, and green, that is a really big deal. I, I'm not sure that we could overemphasize that, because to have that many schools well above average is a big deal.
So I, I've heard what, let's go back to it. Where are we at? Okay, yes, here we go. The Spring Studio had made some changes, okay, so they're making some changes, they're doing better. What about Odyssey? What type of, you know, how are we addressing some of the issues with Odyssey?
So part of what we will be doing with Odyssey is there is a program evaluation going on with, with the LEC Center and, and the interventions going on there. But also, by having them, one of the schools that we're applying for with the literacy grant, early literacy grant, that will allow us onsite coaching, consulting. grant, early literacy grant, that will allow us onsite coaching, consulting. We'll be able to hire an additional instructional coach, reading interventionist. We have to put together a professional development plan for the whole staff. So those are some things involved there.
May I brag on my board for, I promised less than 30 seconds. I can tell you all the things that we're doing at Odyssey Elementary. I can tell you what their data wall looks like in their principal's office. I can tell you which interventionist they're looking to replicate. And the reason I can do that is because you made it a priority. And we're telling you about the stuff that is going great in the district, but this board sat here three years ago and said, get our kids reading. You made it a priority, so I made it a priority, so we made it a priority, so our schools made it a priority. And so I'm emphasizing that, bragging on you a little bit, but I'm also telling you when you tell us to make it a priority, it makes a difference for our kids. And so use that, you know, not everything can be a priority. But when you set it as a priority, it's making a difference for kids.
Well, I thank you guys for the response that you guys have made as far as, you know, for the kids. You know, one of the reasons why we as a board made that a priority is because in third grade literacy, that affects the rest of the school experience and goes over into the rest of their life. So, you know, you guys responded in a great way. Thank you guys very, very much. Great job.
Thank you. And really kudos to the teachers, the parents, the principals, because that's where the rubber meets the road and they're doing a phenomenal job. So, thank you.
Just one silly comment.
I have a present for you too.
One silly comment on my end is it's fun to watch a kid who has really struggled to try, that he now tries to beat how fast Mayon will read the story to him on various pages, which is an interesting little thing to watch as he tries to see if he can, you know, can I beat the computer at how fast I can? Yes. Which is, you know, an interesting little take on how to get his Mayon time, I think. And just as another little plug, I sent this to a couple of people who teach my kids, but they're doing a literacy one-day thing in Denver, co-sponsored by Denver Public Schools, but they're bringing in a researcher from MIT as the keynote on April 9th. So I get it as an email from the International Dyslexia Association as a parent. So if anyone's interested in checking that out, I can forward it. But the guy's the, you know, one of the big research gurus in the development of the brain and learning differences with dyslexia, and he's the keynote that Saturday. And I think it's like 50 bucks.
Look at that.
For five hours. So just so.
I wanted to also honor the teachers. So Kristy said, we have all these people that are doing a 21-hour course. The course is so full, we don't have any more slots. Personal time? Well, that Peak Literacy Summit that we're doing on April 1, if you look at your school calendar, that's the second Friday of spring break. Every single person that comes to that that is not on a 260-day calendar contract, I mean, every one of them is investing personal time. And that's why we're seeing that well above average progress happening.
Great. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And we're going to take just a few minute break and then we will be back. So it's five minutes maybe, guys? So Mr. Ridgeway, we're ready. We knew we were, I think. As a reminder, any of you who would like a snack, there's still sandwich fixings and snacks back in the back room. We won't be offended if you go grab a sandwich and bring it back.
The mic is on. No. Yeah. Red Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer. I'm here filling in for Ron Sprems, who's finance group manager, as you know, and he, another, not another, that's sassy. He has a well-timed sickness tonight, so he's at home recovering from that. So, you know, this is the time of year we start talking about next year's budget usually. In recent years, it's gotten more and more extended as the legislature seems to work slower and wait for economic forecasts and things like that. And this year, we seem to really hit a new low and glacial pace with that because there really is very little to talk about on 1617 budget yet. And but there is, but there is the 2015-16 supplemental budget, which is in place, but it is not finished either. So frustrating, to say the least. So we can, I can talk to you a little bit about the supplemental then, you know, what we're expecting. Again, it's not done yet, but this is what we're expecting. These are the pages that CD has put out in order to demonstrate the differences between the original or what they call the final appropriation at the top of this page for 1516 versus what they are proposing in the supplemental budget and then the change. 170 school districts in the state, of course, I'm showing you a subset of that with some intentionality that I'll show you in a second here. On the second page, though, the key thing to see is, again, we're highlighted here at the bottom, D49, and in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the per people funding proposed in the supplemental budget. 6977 versus the original number on this page down here, 6942. Okay, so we're getting a rate variance. What we did in the amended budget, if you recall, is that we recognized the volume variance side. We projected what our student count would be and how that should come into play, but we did not project yet what the rate variance would be. And so that will be the source of our supplemental budget adjustment that we'll ask you guys to consider hopefully in March. But again, we're really going to have to wait and see what transpires. On the last page here, at the bottom middle, you can see kind of the calculation of that rate and volume variance. So again, we already did the biggest piece of work by getting that volume variance, but the rate variance is not immaterial when you talk, you know, 3/4 of a million dollars that will be added to the budget. So the reason that I highlighted this set of school districts is to indicate some of my frustration with exactly how things have transpired or not transpired and who's been, what you might be able to draw from that. Again, you can see us down at the bottom in this variance column. The variance column is what I've highlighted. So from the original appropriation, District 49 is $7 million higher. Again, we know that a lot of that is for online programs. Goal is a, goal is a big variance on that. And CD Bozis flowing through our numbers is a big piece of that. So it's not that these numbers are coming to the coordinated schools, but they are coming to pieces of our district and those pieces of our district are having to work hard to balance that out. The opposite end of the spectrum here are school districts that owe money back. And while we have been made to suffer, if you will, by not receiving the funds that are owed to us, they've been given again and again and again more benefit by not having to pay back the monies they're owed. And so this is still something that I'm very displeased about this pattern and I have a hard time believing that the players involved aren't causing some of that. Okay. So giving that pontification, then I'll drop that and move on. So we'll bring this to the, these pages, these are, again, the high-level pages that Ron had presented to you with the amended budget. And so we're just updating this with the supplemental budget information. So in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see again that per people funding rate is what is the big change from the amended budget page. So you see the 6977 in the upper left here. The online rate is also going to be adjusted up. That's up about $30 as well for the online funding rate. So there's good rate variance coming to those with online programs as well. Then you have the highlighted here, the underlying traditional PPR rate, meaning the non-online students. Okay? So that, those rate issues are what will flow through both the district side, which is the upper right, and then the charter schools and affiliated schools in the middle right about what's going to change with their revenue budgets. Down or right middle, underneath that purple box, you'll kind of see what Ron is projecting for the net change to the coordinated schools budget then. And then this page was another of the high-level pages that Ron had presented to demonstrate how this would apply from the coordinated schools perspective across the zones and the internal service and internal vendor groups. So what you see in the big box, you see the first column there is the supplemental budget adjustment, which is 814,000. You also see a column in there that he has labeled the dagger adjustment, dagger being, of course, the district. of course, the district adjusted gross revenue, you know, and basically that relates to our fund balance. Okay, so we have a fund balance policy DAC. Anytime our revenue goes up, we have to basically save some of that money in in fund balance. We have to increase our fund balance. So so not all of the the money that that comes in gets to go straight out into the operation. Some of it has to be retained for fund balance. And so that's what that dagger adjustment column reflects is how that would be distributed again amongst the zones and the internal groups so that we get the the net difference over here under the difference column. The good news is that for for most of the zones, this really this really kind of finishes off whatever budget task they still had kind of embedded and set in their numbers after the amended budget. So if you look at the Falcon Zone, for instance, here at $84,000, that was their task as that was kind of remaining in their budget after we passed the amended budget. And, you know, even at that time, we said, well, there's, you know, definitely things that they can do, but we just didn't have to specify it yet. But as we roll in this this supplemental difference, that will that will some of the efforts here of the 171,000, that takes their $84,000 of risk and becomes an $87,000 opportunity for them. Okay, Sand Creek, this is all this is all opportunity for them. So their their 181,000 is all opportunity. The Power Zone had $190,000 task, and they're getting $190,000 of of additional from from the supplemental. So that really takes care of their tasks, too. So the only only zone that we're going to continue to work with then will be iConnect. Their adjustment is 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 60,000 or their prior task was $60,000, and this this adjustment won't quite cover that. There will be one more thing that we've discovered when we looked at the amended budget that That's why I want to work with them and see how can I help them mitigate that. So.
That's they only get 50% per student, right?
Right, 50%. It was 34 students total, 17, so that's 17 funded students. That $6,000 is still is still not small money. That's that's $120,000. So so, yeah, we're gonna we're gonna work with and see how we can help them help mitigate that so it doesn't really cause any lasting impact to them. All right, and I think that would be about it for supplemental budget. Like I said, the legislative stuff is 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 moving slowly. We do have an interesting connection with with a bill that's going through regarding concurrent enrollment that we've been we've been working with some of the drafters of that bill and Representative Lundin, who's been sponsoring that. So that bill has been chosen. There were two different concurrent enrollment bills, and that bill, the bill that we've been working on has been chosen as the one to survive and continue on through the process that will end up being dropped. So that's fun and exciting. We'll be continuing to work on that. And for us, it's really not necessarily a change, but it really kind of is taking some of the things that we're doing, the strategies that we've been implementing strict and making it broader across the state. So a good opportunity to spread, spread the word, if you will, and and spread the process that that we believe in. Other than that, that's it for budget and supplement and legislative update unless you have any questions. Yeah? I am. So there's no there's no real exhibits for this discussion. It's just the cover sheet information. This is the what is now kind of a second year row discussion about what to do with our information technology outsourcing contract. Again, we've used Colorado Computer Support for a number of years now since really since we reorganized and headed down the innovation path. They've been our our vendor for those services. A year ago, we came to you with a recommendation to fulfill the last option year of the contract we'd initially started with them three years prior and and with the intention that we would, after that option year being this current year that we're in, we would have gone through an RFP process that may or may not have come up with the vendor. It may have come up with the exact same vendor, but we have gone through an RFP process that would result in us having a new contract structure starting July 1st of 2016. As we got into the fall, and we and we we were implementing changes with with SchoolDude and doing the ticket system there and doing the inventory system there, we weren't able to to get through that that process in enough time that would give us enough good information to inform, make a well-informed RFP process. And 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 that's really what personally I thought was most important is that the RFP process, when 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 we do go through that, we want to make sure it's well-informed and that we can make a good informed decision. And so talking to fellow chief officers and zone leaders and everyone, and even talking to CCS, what we felt would be best is for us to negotiate kind of an extension now of contract with CCS for another year and now to enter into an RFP process next fall. Because again, it is important that we time that well. We don't want to be doing an RFP process now and try and select a vendor real quick and expect it all to turn around before if if there was to be a change in vendors, they'll be able to turn that around for a July 1st implementation. We need to have this executed in the fall so that we're making decisions around December timeframe so that if there was to be a change in vendors, that we would have that spring semester to really have a good transition period for that. So that's basically the gist of what we're what we're presenting here is to seek your approval to proceed with negotiation, negotiating a one-year extension with CCS for those reasons. Jack, Peter, you want to add anything on those?
Yeah, one of the things and that Brett alluded to is that's not really, or at least feeling that we didn't have the empirical data that would be allow us to make a fair and objective performance evaluation of how they're doing. And I can tell you right now that we were making tremendous progress with, you know, through SchoolDude and a lot of other things. We have a program that we call IT IT Asset Management, which is not only going to be able to provide us a lot of information on our devices and things that are hooked to our network, but then also from there and also through the system we've set up. We met about three weeks ago with our internal IT and CCS folks as well as myself and Jim Rohr from Purchasing, and we came up with an agreement of what we believe are the dashboards that we want to see. And now we're in the process of actually building those dashboards. And so we should have, and the nice part about it is because we started this roughly about a year ago, I believe it was in April of last year, at least when we get through April of this year, we will have a continuous year of data. When we first started, we didn't have really a lot of data, so we really couldn't be able to do any sort of trend analysis. And at least now we'll be able to have that trend analysis and we feel, and I've had some very candid conversations with Blake Schronk as well as about some of the stuff that, you know, because we're really trying to come up with something that gives us the objectivity side of it, but then also some performance stuff on how they're doing on various projects and support of that as well and how their success, hopefully, you know, providing a way that shows how are they doing, whether they're successful or not, but at least I'll be able to have the data. And then I know in visiting with Peter and Brett about this, we feel that it is very imperative to make sure that we're being fair and objective with it as well.
I would just add that part of the fairness is that if we had done a somewhat short cycle RFP, we would have given CCS a huge advantage. There just would have been such pressure to stay with who we know and to make another commitment to them. So we think although it extends our relationship within my year, it's actually more fair to other potential vendors if they have a a full cycle RFP. So, you know, Brett's described when when we plan to do that. It'll be a busy fall with all the other things that we're contemplating, and then it'll be even busier after the election and after this RFP process comes through.
And just to reset, too, of course, you know, this is a service. We're not required to RFP a service. We choose to RFP a service, and that's why we do it on a periodic basis rather than an annual basis. So so given that we have that flexibility and that freedom, that's why we say, you know, we'd rather make it make it make sure it's a good process and an effective process when we're doing it voluntarily like this.
So are we also, I'm assuming, is a piece of this looking? I mean, I remember when we initially went, I remember every piece of this process because it was right after I got onto the board. It was my crash course in how we deal with crises, as the computer systems didn't work and we couldn't get the email and all kinds of crazy stuff as everybody left. But at the time, we had talked about how it would be important to be able to look long-term at what we needed, what would better serve us to have in-house versus what would better service us to have as an external contractor. So I'm assuming as a part of this next year, we're going to be able to get a really good read on on if there's anything that needs to come back in-house versus what we're looking at, both from, not just from the financial perspective, but also from the functionality perspective of what serves buildings and classrooms and operations as well, correct?
Yep.
And because we are extending their contract, you know, twice now, are we still getting good customer service? I mean, just because sometimes when you have to provide.
Yeah, I can allude a little bit to that. We actually do a, we have now somewhat of a systematic process that we do on a monthly basis of going and measure customer service based on, you know, just surveys from the actual customers, which are really our staff members. And there, and I'll give you a, for instance, the first time we did it back in December, we sent out about 300 and some surveys, and we only got three responses. Through John Lichtenberg and a few other folks, we were able to automate a little bit. We sent it out in the month of January, and I believe it was about 386, and we received roughly probably 68 responses, which was phenomenal compared to the three that we had before. And out of the 68, there was really only three negative responses that we review, and we review them on a monthly basis. And they were kind of interesting because it was a negative, but it really wasn't negative. It was, hey, you didn't solve my problem, but I was happy that you at least told me you couldn't solve my problem. And so we are, and now now what we're trying to do through the SchoolDude system is automate that such that we can turn on the survey process on every work order. We can do it every 10th work order. We can do it once a month to do it cyclical because we really don't want to beat, you know, the the customers up too much. But really, what we want to do, and we're asking three questions, was the work done on time? Was it done to your satisfaction? I think we're going to tweak that question because we don't really what their satisfaction means. And then the last one, which is really more important to me, was would you recommend their services to a colleague or to somebody else in 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 another school? And the vast majority of those, even the three responses that we had, there was really only one that wouldn't recommend. The other two would actually, they said they would still recommend even though they get the problem solved. And so those are, that's a metric that we're trying to instill on a systematic basis to be able to do it every month and then be able to have trend analysis to see how are we doing? Are we trending up or are we trending down?
Well, and you also, I noticed on your dashboard reports, you have some dashboards that aren't necessarily perception-based as well, because, you know, if you're not a tech person, you may not understand the difficulty of of what it takes to solve the problem or what really reasonable time is. And so I saw that in SchoolDude, you're pulling some metrics that are comparing as well, and those looked all right. They looked decent from from what I saw in the last operations report.
And what we're trying to do with that is really to provide something that's consistent and systematic. And through now, through a little bit of, you know, we had to do a bunch of work to be able to get the licensing. We now have the licensing in place to be able to review the documents or the the dashboards that were being built from SchoolDude. And now we're beginning to build the trend analysis. That was the piece that we've been missing all along is we knew where we stood as of a particular month, but we've been doing a manual process of trending it. And some of the other data that we have, we can actually trend it over a 24 or 36-month process. And that really helps us because as we've shared with Blake and his staff, is it really is important not only where we're at, but also where we've been and where we're going. And so once we know where we're at, then we and we if we know a trend is either positive or negative, we can develop a game plan to basically overcome that or, you know, if we have a deficiency, we can overdevelop a plan to overcome a deficiency. But then also, if we're doing good, we also want to continue to, you know, how can we do much better? And the other one last piece that I want to mention that involves a little bit of it as well, which will be very helpful, is we're through a program with SchoolDude, we will be able to identify the all of the number of devices and peripheral devices that are active on the network that really are being supported by our vendor at this point in time, which is CCS. Because we felt that that was, you know, it's hard because some of the stuff we'll get, and we really don't know, is a device active or not active? And so we've we've created a game plan in a very aggressive timeframe because we got to get it back to Brett by the end of March. Unfortunately, we're going to SchoolDude in the middle of March, and it's one of the things to be able to get it done. And so, you know, once we have that, we will have good knowledge of what really are they supporting? What is the system that they're supporting, not only from the device standpoint, the peripherals, the number of servers we have, the number of security cameras we have, because those are IP-driven as well?
So they're needing basically a direction from us. So what is our consensus? Is everybody okay with them going for one more year? We don't have to vote on it, no. They just need a direction. So this is just guidance. Okay, so.
Yeah, we haven't we haven't had specific action on on options and things like that. Paul, you would, we would see it and present it to you as part of the budget package when that comes forward for 1617.
So I think you have the consensus to pursue that option.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, and now you're on to the monthly financials.
All right, I'm going to take over. Ryan Johansson, Accounting Group Manager. So as in past months, I'd like to take a page or two and dissect it and help you understand So I thought I'd start out on on this page, page two. Page two. I know it doesn't help probably a whole lot on iPads, but maybe you can zoom in a little Okay. So this is a quick summary of all the funds and what's going on with it. So the far left-hand column over here is the fund, and the next column over is the budget. Sorry. Now they lost the screen. There you go. You got it? All right, I'll keep talking then. So the next column over is the budget. The the top number, I'll come back to that one that's in black. I'll come back to that. The next number down is the revenue. So the expected revenue that we're going to get for the year, the next line below that is the expected expenses for that for that fund. So it goes goes all the way down. The next column over from that is the actuals. So that's where we are through the end of the month. So actual revenue, actual expenses, and then that black line, that black number is the change in fund balance. So as expenses are higher than revenue, that decreases the fund balance, as you see with with the Fund 10. And then the next column over is the percent of budget that's been used or come in. So we're 58% of the year, 58% of the through the year. So you'll see, hopefully, numbers that are are somewhere within that range. You see in Fund 10 that the revenues are are slightly lower than the 58%. That's due to property taxes usually coming in, the majority of the property tax is coming in 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 March, April timeframe, so that'll come back up. Expenditures are running pretty good. We're also missing the, as Brett talked about, the CDE adjustment for people count, things like that. So that funding hasn't come in. I'm going to skip that middle column for a second and then go over to far right, those numbers in purple. That is where we were last year. So last year's year-to-date budget and then the actual amount that was received from year-to-date. So you're looking apples-to-apples comparison and the percent budget that was spent at that point in time. The middle column is is where we see the the change in fund balance. So the the far left of that middle column is where we ended the year or started this year at, and then. And then the next, the middle column is. Is what was, is happening right now. The top line is what happened, what things will look like with the, with the budget. And what would happen if things stopped today at actual. So if we collected no more revenue and spent no more money, here's where we would end the year at. But we still have time going. So just to give you an idea of what's, what that is, and then the last column is where we'd end the year with the fund balance. Versus budget and where we're at today. Any questions on that?
Alright. Ryan, um, can you clarify again what this restated package is versus the original?
So the restated package. Has to do with fund 10, uh, the percent budget. This bottom right there is, is now at 57%, I think it was like 60, 63%. Yeah, there is a double count. Uh, we're adjusting the accrued salaries and they got booked in the wrong period. So we made that, caught that adjustment. So. That was the, that was the reason for the update. Like to take a look at one, one more section here. It's a pretty big one. It's page 21 of the package. So once again, there's a lot of. I don't know what page number of the. Once again, there's a lot of data on here. Yep. So, uh, this is breaking out expenses by school. The, it's broken out by zones. That's the little minor lines going through there. And the top half is, is expenses, actual expenses. And the bottom half is where it's normalized for, uh, based on the per pupil rate. So if you look at Falcon Elementary, uh, for regular instruction, we see they spent a little over half million dollars. But if you look at Meridian Ranch, they spent 1.2 million. You start, may ask the question, why? That's, that's a big, that's a big difference. But if you scroll down to it on a per pupil basis. Falcon Elementary is spending slightly more per pupil than, than Meridian Ranch. So it's just to help you take things into context, not just look at it on a, on a dollar value, but take into account each school's situation. Any questions on that? If you go through eventually a couple of pages later down, it does it, uh, gives you the budget for that. So, um, it gives you personnel costs. Implementation costs and then it, a total for the school. And then it goes into the budget and repeats that same process.
So those are just pages, again, it's a lot of numbers, but it gives you the opportunity to compare. Various levels of schools across, across zones. You can look at how the three high schools compare on a per people basis. For those categories, you can see, um, how the schools are doing within a zone, all within one, one page here. So it's taking, it's summarizing some of the data that's shown elsewhere on the reports. But just lining it up here right now. See real quick. So you could do some, some eye checks and, and, and see how they're comparing with each other.
Questions?
Anything concerning that we should be looking at or are we just looking at?
No, I, I don't particularly see anything concerning, especially when you look at it on a per people basis and you see, you know, you see differentiation, but nothing. Really extreme different, right? You, you know, you see, uh, and so that, that I think is some good comfort that. We have the differentiation, which, which is supporting the local decisioning that we're trying to do. So that's why you see the differentiation. But it's not in the end resulting in any, any result that's markedly different from school to school.
Oh, one last update. Oops, passed it. Our favorite topic of people activity funds. This is page 30 in the package. Yeah, just want to point out, uh, Vista Ridge's cheer program has significantly decreased. Now it's only $7,500 in the hole. So they're, they're trending. Trending pretty good. They're got, got a plan in place to get themselves back on track by the end of the year.
Horizon still has four categories that are in the red. Or is that still due to allocating frame reduced?
Yes, those are all, uh, winter sports, volleyball, uh, basketball, wrestling and cross country. I think cross country, they'll end up having to fix that on principal discretionary, but. Dustin, uh, he knows about it and is, is on track, but he doesn't want to move that money over until the frame reduced. Supplementals come in, otherwise won't be able to get some money back. So. So he, he's aware he has a plan. I'm not worried about them at all. Any other questions on?
So summarize after 50 something slides, we're on track. Everything's looking like it's proceeding as expected.
Yes. Um, unless Brett has any. I'm not, I'm not seeing any concerns with any, uh. Any schools or in total looking on track.
By the way, I do like the, uh, the cover slide. It helped me figure out where everything was.
Alright, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Matt Meister, uh, communications director. For election planning tonight, uh, in your packet, you had information that was on d49.org specifically at d49.org slash our future. For you to read over, some of that has been changed as we've continued to add details to our plan. You can also get to that on the d49.org homepage under district info and election 2016. So before we get to the sheets that I just handed out, I would ask if you have any questions about what was on the website or if Brett has anything to add. Okay, um, I will draw your attention to one of the, uh, two priority number two of the plan and the webpage that goes with that. This is for, um, what we're calling renovating and refurbishing or refreshing our existing schools. And Brett has, um, in detail presented this portion of the plan to you. Uh, how the allocation of money on the 10-year certificate of participation is allocated to each school off of its weighted. Age of construction with additions and whatnot, the square footage, and you see the monies there. The sheets that you have in your hand, uh, there will be a sheet for every school and the Falcon homeschool program. That will be created. Uh, we're still aggregating data from the operations office and from the district planning office. Uh, our goal is to by the end of next week, have all of the schools, all of their acronyms there. Will be a link to a PDF document of what you are holding in your hand. And then physical copies of these documents will live in the hundreds at each school. So that parents, when they're at the schools, sporting events, music concerts, volunteering can get that information about their specific school. And in information that we will deliver to every home in the community via mail. Uh, we will also invite them to come into the schools to pick up, uh, one of these for whichever schools closest to them or to drive to all of them, whatever they would like to do. To get physical copies of them in addition to letting them know that this information is available on the website. So I just wanted to give you guys a, a feel of that. Um, you can see that the top right-hand corner of the documents that you have are placeholders. Still as the, um, operations office, the business office and the principals at the school identify, uh, the highest priority projects to them. Given what the system health ratings are and what the educational program needs are in the school. So. This is still a, a working kind of, we're in process of generating these materials. But I did want you to see them tonight and, uh, give you the opportunity to provide us some feedback before we mass produce them, if you will.
It's a lot of information here. But I think a lot of information is necessary.
Right.
I think that, uh, you know, the more information, the better. I think giving it, you know. Making it available to our constituents, to our families. I think this is really good. It's a lot more information than we gave, uh, the last time. Very well done. I like it a lot. I really do.
Good. They'll be color coded by zone. Uh, that's what the coloring is at the top. So. Everything in Sand Creek Zone will have that red top. So if you're a parent and you have, uh, students at several schools within that zone, you'll see some alignment there. That uses the typical color scheme that we use for each of our zones.
You notice a lot of information. It's important information. I think it's well organized.
Right.
And very clear. I like it a lot. I, I like it a lot.
Thank you.
I gotta commend Kevin for actually, um, getting this from Thompson Valley. I'd actually seen a precursor to this at school dude about a year and a half ago. And also saw it from the, the folks down at New Mexico, but it's a very concise way to be able to put together. As stated, a lot of information in a very concise way, but it's very good information.
So in addition to having copies at the physical schools, what about, and those of you who live in the other zones will have to help me figure out what would work in those zones. But in Falcon Zone, we have the High Plains Library. We have the Woodman Hills Rec Center, Meridian Ranch Rec Center. Those three places are.
We'll have all those.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Yeah. Cause they're highly trafficked by people who don't have kids.
Exactly. And there are some community boards at, at things like grocery stores, um, you know, will identify those places and put these in as many locales as possible. Because that definitely is the, the plan this time that you guys have signed up on versus what we did in 2014. So we will do that.
Now are the website pieces live right now?
They are. You can go to them. Yeah. If you go to d49.org slash our future, that's the quickest way to get to it. That will be the hyperlink that we communicate in our, um, you know, physical pieces of materials. I'm working on a tabloid document right now. That will be a summary of those webpages. Uh, we'll, we'll kind of from a high level overview of the plan. And then it will point people to the website for, you know, the latest details is that's where it will get filled up with time. As we continue to aggregate the information and start to develop, uh, some blueprints on projects that, that are in development. So.
So did the header on the elementaries get switched?
Oh, those were just.
The ones, was that just in ours where it says?
Yeah, that was in your packet. Right. Those were.
Those weren't live yet.
Right. Those were quick and dirty workups.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my question.
So what you have in your hand is more, is getting closer to what they'll end up looking like.
Yeah, I was just looking at that, like the little thing with the links that we had that says building our future community. This piece, not these sheets, but this one that was the website.
Okay.
It says two new high schools and it should be two new elementary schools. So.
I think it does say two new elementary schools now.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wasn't sure because I mean, like, I had caught it, but I didn't know.
We're not building two new high schools.
Underneath it then says elementary.
Brett's even better than we. Good catch. Brett, do you have anything to add from what we, since you've been up here over the last couple of weeks?
You know, uh, I, I really, I'd really like these a lot. I love the collaboration that it really provides or it's really exhibiting, I should say. Uh, between, between Melissa and my office, between Jack and his folks and, and, and Matt and, and the education folks. This is really, it'd be a good. Conglomeration of all those different, uh, perspectives coming onto one sheet here. Uh, and hopefully, you know, especially with that box in the upper right-hand corner, he is focusing in on priority two. Uh, being, uh, being the most visible, uh, way that every school is going to have, have good benefit from, from the proposal. But this will be a great vehicle to communicate that and generate that excitement. Just in general, we continue to make, you know, make presentations. We did, was able to present the whole package to the DAC last night. Which always had to, was really interested to see what, what their response is going to be, but I thought it went really well. A lot of good questions, but in the end, very good support, uh, for it. Uh, we are continuing to, uh, have the, you have a lot of things scheduled with, with buildings to do building staff level communications and presentations as well. So. Uh, every step of the way, things are still really looking well and continuing on, on a good path course for us. So. And, and having this type of materials, uh, will do, will do a great thing to, to reemphasize that and for people that can, they can refer back to it and say, yeah, I may have heard the presentation and understood it then. But then, you know, a month later, a couple of weeks later, what, what did that mean? I forgot what that said. So. This, this is, this is really great, a really great complete package coming together for us.
And we'll do our, our first big digital push to parents and to staff, once these are completed and available for download on the website. So that should be first week of March.
So one thing that a couple of people came up to me after the DAC meeting last night that, um, wanted to know who was going to come up with the plan priorities for each school. And their, their thought was that it should, it should include their SAC. That was their, their thought is that. It should be presented to the SAC at some point of what that individual school is saying is their plan priority to make sure that they're in agreement with it. I'm just sharing.
Right. That, that certainly has been, been the suggestion I've made to principals as we presented it to them is that, you know, A, that this would be building level decisions. Informed by good information from, from facilities, from planning and stuff to say, hey, make sure you, make sure you're considering these things. But hopefully that, that the building leaders then are, are taking that and involving staff and students and the community. I haven't been very, we haven't been, I would say totally prescriptive of that and we could, we could shift that way if, if you'd like us to, to, to make sure that they, they, uh, do that. But, um, we certainly, we've been at the suggested level, I guess.
Yeah. And I, I think even in my meetings with the, you know, some of the various principals, even some of the, the zone leaders is the same thing is that we're really, the components are collaboration and communication. You know, not only internally, but also externally as well.
I think it'll generate good conversation between, uh, school building leadership and the SAC. If there's something in the system health ratings that maybe shows poor, why that might not show up in, in the priorities for the plan, priority number two funds. To have that dialogue, I think both groups are more equipped to do that, uh, with information like this. So.
Yeah. And I, I like what the, the way, you know, it's laid out is, it's almost perfect for what Matt just said is because, you know, the, if you get something that's in a red column, obviously that's, you know. Especially if you look at the one that we have for Sand Creek and we're saying in the fire safety electrical, you know, we have it in the red column. Well, why? So then, you know, we can research that. We, we have part of the reasons why this is, but I think it provides that a, a little bit of dialogue and that's really why I like it. You know, the model that we have is, is, is almost presented for it because it, you know, we need to collaborate, communication, uh, communicate along ours because we are decentralized. And so not only, you know, do we in, in the facility side of it need to support, you know, the school, but also then, you know, when the school gets asked a question. Then we need to be able to provide that information for them.
I was thinking if you're planning to send this out March 1st, it's really short notice for most SACs to be able to. Talked about it because it did not seem from the conversation at SAC that anybody or at DAC that anybody had heard about this yet.
Right. Well, we can, we can talk more about that.
And I don't know that the, the publishing of it is, is, is saying it's published in a final form at all. Okay.
Oh, just as they have here, you know, large refresh refurbish product, I mean, large projects using money specifics to follow maybe.
Right. Well, we're, those bullets were just a placeholder. Like there will be, uh, actual specific projects and their value or what they will cost.
By March 1st?
That's the plan.
No. No, I don't, I don't think we'll have specific sub projects within there. There'll still be some, some TBD.
Okay.
That we will need to fill in as we go.
So what we're missing, we'll make sure that it had to be announced.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's also, um, a, a survey, uh, will be turned on tomorrow morning. I've ended up making it pretty complicated. So I'm still, um, working on it. But, um, there will be at the end of that series of webpages, uh, that does include all of the discussions that have been happening at work sessions and board meetings. There will be an opportunity, uh, for our stakeholders and customers and residents to, to give us feedback on the plan. And so versus some traditional polling, which we do plan on doing later, um, we'll get some kind of first pass feedback on a large scale, if you will.
Thank you. Sorry, Peter.
No, no worries. Peter Hill's chief education.
My stuff, yeah.
Chief Education Officer, and I am pleased to be back to speak with you again about our district identity, vision, mission, and philosophy. Those, those things, our vision, our mission, our philosophy, our identity, our educational philosophy, our operational philosophy, all of those live in policy AD. Policy AD is the the core beliefs document for a school district. And in our case, we are recommending that we change the title of this policy to reflect that we are identifying. We are casting a vision. We're declaring a mission to accomplish that vision and we're expressing our philosophy. So all four of those elements are incorporated into this new title. The elements of this new policy are a little bit easier to see. It's a little bit more reader friendly in this document. So with your permission, what I will, what I will do is assure you that what is in this document is reflected in this more technical white paper kind of document, the policy. But this document is really intended to be more community facing to all of our stakeholders. So whether individuals work for the district, have a child in the district, have a schedule in the district because they're a student or have an interest in the district because they're a resident, we would want to be able to walk them through this document or have them see it in a public place in one of our buildings. And so we begin by identifying who we are. We are the geographically largest district in the Pike's Peak region. We encompass the largest portion of the city of Colorado Springs and almost half of the city. If you use powers as roughly a vertical bisect for the city. Roughly half of the district is roughly half of the city is part of District 49. We are also extending into El Paso County. We serve major communities that that are not always well defined, like the Powers Corridor. Well, does that extend all the way to to Mark Scheffel? Or is it only between, it's not well defined. But when you use that locally in the Pike's Peak region, people have a sense of who we are. Falcon is also not well defined. Black Forest is not perfectly bounded. But when you say that we are the Powers Corridor, Banning Lewis Ranch, extending through Falcon up into Black Forest, you give people a real accurate sense of who we are. And so that's where we begin with board guidance from our last conversation about this. We start with who we are. And the students that we serve are part of our stakeholder group. The entire community that that we occupy is part of our stakeholders. So it's residents, parents, students, staff. All of them count. The next row on the one pager then is our our vision and our mission. And you'll see the words the best choice, which are a little different. So there's a tweak here that we that we previewed earlier and we're bringing it now to you formally. You'll see on the wall that we've had a rock, Rock 3, called the Best District. And from a communication standpoint, we end up tripping over ourselves over and over when we say District 49, the best district to learn, work, and lead. And we really wanted to emphasize an area where District 49 has been a state leader, even a national leader. We are one of the one of the districts that really has delivered on choice for parents and students. So as a portfolio district, we want parents who are choosing a district for their child. We want students who are choosing pathways for their future. We want businesses who are choosing a partner to help them develop the workers and leaders that they need. We want teachers who are looking for a great workplace. And we want leaders who are administrators, who are coaches, who are board members. We want people that want to choose to choose us. So we've adopted that language of the best choice. So it would flow off your your tongue as District 49, the best choice to learn, work, and lead. So we have identity, District 49. Our vision is to be the best choice every time someone has a choice. And the mission that will accomplish our vision is that we are constantly learning, working, and leading. So that's the first two rows, identity, vision, and mission. Let me pause there and see if there are any questions before I move on to culture and strategy. So not surprisingly, since we've talked about this and we've lived it, this comes out of five to seven years of conversations going well, well back, really preceding almost any of us in this room. Maybe Brett is the exception and Tammy was involved, not yet on the board, but early conversations about being a portfolio district and offering great choices and partnering with all kinds of schools, online schools and charter schools and conventional schools. Those really are the foundation of this culture and this cultural compass is our vehicle to represent how we treat each other, which is the inner ring, being respectful and transparent, accountable and caring. That's the inner ring of how we treat each other and the outer ring of how we treat our work, that we're strategic, innovative, and creative, but we're always learning. So when we act that way, we're uplifting and fulfilling our cultural commitments. When we don't, we're in violation of our culture and we should call ourselves and hold ourselves accountable to that and get back in conformity with our culture. So the cultural compass is is positionally above our strategy because it should be. It's more permanent and it's a deeper commitment. Strategies should and must change as times change and circumstances change. But our culture is a longstanding commitment. And so we have to weigh every strategy, every initiative, every program. Even every personnel decision should be weighed against our culture. Is this who we are as a culture? And finally, then we get to our strategies. And we believe that the the Big Rocks metaphor has served us well. We continue to use it. We are at a point after using the same five big rocks, we're at a point where we are asking you to approve an adjustment to the big rocks. By bringing the idea of being the best district up into the vision statement as the best choice, we have an opportunity to stay with five rocks and and we can draft a new rock. And so as you've heard me explain before, we believe that while launching every student to success has something of a secondary feel because it's from high school that we will typically launch students. We didn't really have a rock that spoke as clearly to the elementary level. And so we really wanted to add this notion of firm foundations that we are building for our students and for our staff and for our community, a firm foundation of literate character, calculators, students, workers, leaders who can think and express themselves well, who can calculate and plan well, who can lead with character and integrity. And so firm foundations is a broad commitment. It's a broad strategic priority. And you'll see it show up in a lot of specific initiatives. So that means that our rocks would be that we we base everything on building trust with our community. We ask our community to engage with us as we engage with them so that we can operate a portfolio of distinct and exceptional schools that gives every student, every teacher, every leader, a firm foundation for success and that we then launch students toward that success in whatever endeavor they might pursue. So that's the way that our strategy derives from our culture, from our vision and mission, and from our identity. And it's the way that our identity and our vision and mission are expressed through our culture and through the actions that make up our strategy. So the arrows on the sides of this one pager are really intended to show that vision is expressed through action, but actions are aligned back to vision. So I would invite questions if you have any about this, this one pager, or I can click back if you would like into the policy proper. Or I can sit down.
No. Mr. Stay up. I like your WHO on the one pager. Much better than I like your identity on the policy, the way it's written, just letting you know that. It almost says the same thing, but the the one pager is definitely worded, I think, more clearly and I don't know, just better. They don't say the same thing. They don't say, they are not identical. Well, I would just say that the identity is the WHO, right? That's what you explained.
It is.
So they pretty much should be the same. The mission should be the same. The vision should be the same on both documents.
We could definitely.
The way the one page is written.
We could definitely adjust that. And if the if the board has that preference, we could, we could easily pull this copy and pull it into there. I think we were looking at, for example, the 21,000 student reference and I think the specific reference that we are El Paso County District 49, those are kinds of mouthfuls that we would want to put on the one pager. But if, I know, I know, that's, we have a little bit more technical stuff in the policy. You're saying just pull the technical stuff and just pull the WHO off of the one page. The one pager is intended to be a mass communication piece. This is intended to live in our policy archives. Easy, easy fix. I needly persuade.
I don't care, you know, whatever these guys like. I just like it all to be congruent.
I'm good with that.
So then a silly thing along those lines, then, do we really want a number stated in a policy? So the policy says serving over 21,000 students. So technically, as long as we don't shrink at all, that stays true. But do we want a number stated in policy? I get it on the one pager because that's easily adjusted without coming back in front of us. But that would be one of those silly technical details that maybe we don't want in policy because then it requires you to review it more frequently.
One of the largest growing communities in the Pike's Peak region.
Great, that's. Just as a thought of.
It's a policy with a number is really.
No, the editing is not hard there at all. It sounds like you, you would be receptive of having it on the one pager. It's one of the first questions anybody asks us about our district. And so depending on the people that are asking, I think it's good in the one pager.
Exactly. I think it's appropriate in the one pager. It's sort of that whole minimalist in the policy, lots more expansive in the REG because REG doesn't have to come in front of the board as frequently and doesn't have to have all the technical editing. So personally, I would, I would take the number out. I do like that, you know, given that the angst and pain I've heard over the mission that really what you did was just add a phrase at the beginning and left what was there because of the number of of people and the long memory of what it took to make that mission statement. There are still people who would have angst. So I appreciate it that it that it's still reflected in policy exactly as that committee, however many years ago, many members are still involved. We're there. I think that does honor to the people who did it. So thank you for that piece.
You're welcome because everything in that long form mission is still true today. It it does animate all the work that we do. It's just too much to say in an elevator.
Okay, so are we okay with it with those, that change?
So I think the changes that I've heard are to to adopt the language from the one pager. The WHO section of the one pager becomes the identity section of the policy proper with the exclusion of the the reference to 21,000 students in the policy, but that will stay on the one pager.
Yes. And so with that, we'll move with those edits forward to March 10th and then who's taking care of the edits? So we have clarity on that. Who's editing the policy? All right. Just making sure we have all of those little pieces covered. Okay, so then we're on to item 13, monthly chief officer reports. Anything, anyone ask questions on? We had quite a bit in our, or anything you wanted us especially to pay attention to, although I'm sure all of us have read them.
I think one thing I'd just like to note, there wasn't a part of my update is the signage at Creekside is almost complete. We've got the majority of the signs there. They, hopefully the electrical, they'll be electrified within the next two weeks and then also the sign on the south end will actually be installed as well.
One thing that I, you know, the Gazette is putting out there, how much it costs for snow? How much that storm cost us? Do we have any way to see where we're at on that?
Yeah, we, we can easily define the number of man hours and stuff. I think it's more of the emotional cost than the financial cost of it. But yes, we can if you would like me to do that.
It just was something that I saw in the Gazette and I wondered if we are going to have like an over budget issue like they did that we're going to have to address as we go through the year and all.
Really can't answer that question right now because really it was, you know, it was more of, as we roll out the rest of it because really from a standpoint of the one exception would be the loader that we had to rent. That was unusual and exceptional, but the rest of it really is is the manpower that we had within the district itself.
We're pretty much going to be okay. We're not going to have to worry about our budget from that one snowstorm.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I must say, I really like the executive summaries from the chief business officer and the chief operations officer.
In the, in the, in the business office section, there is one page I'd like to draw your attention to, which is page, what, 282 of your document. It's page 31 of the, of the business office section. It's the what slide entitled Risk and Benefits. Yeah. Yes. Wait just a second for Matt to get there. What we want to, it's. Keep going back. One more, one more there. All right. So this is a lot of good information from Shannon Hathaway, who's who's the Risk and Benefits Manager. The one thing I wanted to draw your attention to is in the middle right section that's called Workman's Comp. The last, the last item there is called the Experience Mod. For anyone who knows how Workman's Comp works, Experience Mod is how it's measured. How what you're doing basically in in workplace safety. The, the, the rating there, the average rating is 1.0 even. So if you are greater than 1.0, you're less safe than normal. And if you are less than 1.0, then you are much safer than normal. And you see a projected rate for 2016, 17 at a 0.73. That's the lowest that I've known us to be. We've been on a steady improvement on this. Really, it's in, and since I came to the district, I think we were over one when I first got to the district and we went, we've been getting better in general, very consistently. And so I think it's a great, it's a great testament to to the work that Shannon does, of course, but really, you know, what happens in the operations group and the leadership that we have there is this is a great validation of that. And so I just wanted to show that to you all in in particular because when Shannon and I got that, we were really excited to see a 0.73.
Yeah. A safer place to learn.
Yes, yeah.
Because that really.
It works with that safe.
It puts money back in our.
It does.
Our kids.
Right, because that's a multiplier.
Well, yeah, because and there's, there's so much that really trails with that, you know, that that means that we're having less, less time lost from workplace injuries and things like that. So that means we're increasing our efficiencies and our effectiveness both. When those things typically can be opposite, those that, this is an example of how they're working together.
Yeah, I just adds a little bit. I think, you know, one of the things that will will help this is one of our staff members, Tara Carey, which is in safety and compliance, safety and health compliances. She's actually working on some information as well, not only from a standpoint of workers and stuff like that. And we've had numerous discussions, but also beginning to work on the compliance side of it, see how we're doing. So through her efforts and the efforts of, you know, basically all of us working together, really been able to do this. I'm like Brett, haven't been familiar with the risk side of it. This is phenomenal.
I only want to mention one kind of class of things, and that is the school that we have proposed under the reorganization of the ICANEX Zone called Pike's Peak Early College or PPEC is both a multi-district online program, which is a very, very complex application and approval, as well as an early college, which is a complex approval. And so thanks in very large part to Mary Perez and Andy Franco and Dave Kanoki. Our, our application to be a multi-district online program is approved and going forward to the state board. And we are just on the cusp of learning that our application to be an early college is also going to be approved. So that's a pretty big pair of wins. And in terms of the the benefit of cultivating relationships was very evident. The the person who is in charge of the approval process at CD is a woman named Michelle Liu. Mary has has worked very hard to be a resource and a supportive partner to Michelle in her work with concurrent enrollment. We as a district have worked very hard with our legislative partners and our, and our other folks on concurrent enrollment. And a bill that we have had significant influence on is going forward as the flagship bill for concurrent enrollment in this session. And so. And so it, it just speaks to the value that sometimes takes a while to realize of staying in good relationships with folks in Denver and being a good partner and also a good resource with them. So really, really proud of the I Connect Zone folks and the hard work that they've done. And seeing their work be validated up there was really exciting. And, and it will still be one more time at the state board, finally. But the state board will follow CDE's recommendation.
Well, I have to say last night at DAC, they specifically requested that Mary come and talk about concurrent enrollment because, you know, she's getting her name out there and getting that program out to the district in a very positive way. So thank you for working so hard to get that in just one year. It's amazing what you've done. So I'm excited for that.
Anything else? Any other questions on that? Okay, so then our last item is policy and procedure reviews. So we had three policies, two for Mr. Fletcher and one with Andy. I think the policy C is the one that we did the emergency approval on before. So we're just doing the extra reads that we had to do. Any questions on the other two, student records and release of information or custodial and non-custodial parent right and responsibility? That would be awesome.
Tim Farmer, School District Attorney. I, I had the opportunity to spend some time with these revisions today. And there's a number of concerns that we had, particularly with the custodial parent policy that we might want to make some edits and revisions. And without going into too much detail, I think there are some places where, when you think of parent rights, it's actually, you know, there's, there's a lot of different rights that you have as a parent. And I think there's some sections where it conflates custodial rights, which is essentially concerned with where a student resides, with some other types of rights. Just as one example, you know, a parent has rights under FERPA to examine student records. And simply because that parent isn't the custodial parent, doesn't mean that they, their right to examine records is vanquished. And there's some confusion in the policy, I think, about, it, it sort of uses that term custodial parent to sort of encompass all parental rights, and that's not necessarily accurate. And so I think there's just some cleanup we would like to do.
Okay, so would it be better then for us to, instead of having this on the March 10th meeting for approval, let's bring it back at the next meeting as a discussion item instead with those edits? Does that give you enough time to work with these guys or do you need it until the April work session?
No, I can, I mean, we can turn it around in a few days.
I mean, March work session. Okay, so we still have, we can have it as a, that particular policy, let's put as a discussion item at the March 10th meeting. And the other two, if no one has questions, we can move those forward for action. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah, that is good because I have very similar concerns. I did talk to Dr. Fletcher about them, but I was going to reference it to Peter about differences between parental rights, which I'm a big advocate for, and custodial, not custodial parent rights. And decision-making rights is a whole slew of things in there when you come to this kind of thing.
And in fairness, I mean, these are, these are very delicate issues. And I think that as a school district, you should be reluctant to the extent, you know, possible to not inject yourself into sort of some of these very delicate and sensitive, you know, parental rights custody type issues better handled at the courts, I think, than in the front office of a school.
I would agree.
Okay, and that is the last item on our agenda. So we are done. Thank you, everybody.